Next, I was going to say a little bit about what we're doing here tonight. We are here for a wonderful Ho Foods Dinner and also to discuss our strategic planning for the next year to four years depending on how we do this. So, Alderman, Beth.
Could we make food available to the other members here?
Sure.
If I could everyone to join in?
I'm here, I'll ready eat. And that concludes my public announcements. City Mayor, Jeff.
I have no public announcements.
You want to introduce Jeff?
I will after this is over.
Okay. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
In C and S, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you. And next on the agenda is citizen comment. Do we have any sign up sheets? Oh, could I borrow your iPhones? I didn't know we had citizen comments.
You look dapper.
All right. First is Jurnad Rizki and second, I absolutely can't read it and there's no address. You've got to be kidding me, Ron.
I'm not, I think it is.
All right.
I guess I should stand up. I'm looking at the goals. One goal that I'm very interested in that's not on here is the issue that I've had for quite a while with the water plant, the water operation. And I've said this at council and I repeat it again, the water operation has no fiscal responsibility because the city cannot tell me the profit the water operation makes. So if we're running a business that is a huge business for the city and we're about to raise water rates 33 percent, this is part of capital planning because that's one of the issues, we ought to really have a good understanding of what this business is doing fiscally. It's supposedly an enterprise fund of the city. And I mean, I foiaed this, I've got a stack of information this wide, and the city basically said, "We can't tell you the profit." So, I mean, that's what they told me and they may have expenses. So, I think council members should realize this is $150 million capital assets sitting on the lake. It makes things like Harley Clark look like nothing and there's really not, it's not being run properly. That's pretty clear to me. You can't tell me your profit. And then you want to go out and spend a half a billion dollars to tie into other suburbs. I mean, this seems to me to be a very fiscally irresponsible approach to a business. So I think as a goal, somebody out here ought to figure out what this business is doing. That should be a goal of this council, to know just what you're doing with this operation, to expand it, and also taxpayers, in the interest of the taxpayers, to know you're going to charge another 33 percent to everyone's water bill and know the money's being spent correctly. And that's my agenda topic.
Thank you, Mr. Rizki. Ron?
Thanks. Couple, I, there's, I'm going to talk first as myself and then-
Would you identify yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ron Fleckman. And I'm a citizen of the city for the last 40 years or so.
Thank you.
And I live in 140, 124 Keene in Evanston. And so first, I'm going to talk as an individual, then I'm going to talk as a representative from the Board of Directors of CGE Citizens Reap and Reap. So first, I just wanted to congratulate the council and the residents of the city for voting this council into place. The evidence of it, in my opinion, my humble opinion, was the council did what it was elected to do in last week's sort of crazy council meeting. I think for people to have gotten so hysterical about something that I think people really should have done, the council was going to do the right thing ahead of time. But I don't think they did. But I'd like to congratulate you all for doing what you, well, I sort of knew what you would do anyway. You guys typically do the right thing.
Got it. I'm all over it. No problem.
Second, I want to talk about, now, as a member of the CGE Board of Directors, with the long-term plan, what we would like to encourage the council to implement or to put into this long-term plan is the concept of sustainability. And I know one of the council's goals is making Evanston the most livable city in the country, which I think is really a very noble goal, but I don't think anybody really knows what that means. And I think there are portions of this community that don't experience Evanston as the most livable community in the country. I think there are portions of the citizenry that does. But I think moving forward, the city has to bring those parts together. CGE's involvement in this whole thing, CGE Citizens Reap and Reap Evanston, is really interested in the city becoming sort of on par with some of the really well-known national leadership cities around the country, Palo Alto, places like that. What we do, what this city, what this city does on sustainability is probably right up there with Palo Alto in terms of greenhouse reductions, sustainability and all that stuff. And a lot of that has to do with the forward-thinking of the council going back, was it six or seven years ago when it decided to bring in a sustainability person? And that kind of started that ball rolling and then it evolved into Catherine Curly, who's the newest sustainability person to my people's just, if somebody could actually walk on water, I think she might be the person. She's, she really does an amazing job and moves forward even with a baby she somehow manages. So we would like to see the city, as you talked about moving forward, we'd like to see the city brand itself or co-brand itself as a sustainable city and get all of the benefits that come along with that. You know, we were lucky enough to bring or to get Walgreens to decide to do this crazy energy efficient building down on Chicago Avenue, the most green building in the country that they're doing. And they chose Evanston because they knew Evanston was open to these ideas. My question is, how many other national businesses or small businesses could be open to the same idea, knowing that Evanston is a city that really does accept and hope for people to do those kinds of things? That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment unless somebody else could sign up and want to. All right, next one. I only have one sheet. Did you want to speak?
Well, go ahead and speak.
Okay. Okay. I'd actually like to read a letter on behalf of a group and then-
I'm sorry, you need to give the-
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Damaschek, 13th and Johnson. And I'd like to read a letter and then I had prepared my own thing to say, so I'd like to first try to do that real quick. So, on behalf of no park sale dot org, we strongly request that at such time as any city committee is formed to determine the future use of the Harley Clark Mansion, that no park sale dot org have a significant presence on any such committee. We make this request based on the significant role that our organization played in mobilizing hundreds of Evanston residents to demonstrate their objections to the potential sale of public park land for private profit. More than 2,000 citizens signed petitions opposing the sale. 1,000 yard signs appeared on lawns overnight. You received hundreds of phone calls and emails from all wards of the city expressing their dismay that the city would consider such an action. On July 22nd, more people than for any other city issue in memory came to city council with meaning urging you not to pursue negotiations for the sale of our public park land. Thank you for doing the right thing by ending such negotiations. Now's the time for the community to come together to fulfill No Park Sale dot org's commitment, which we made to you on July 22nd, to bring all facets of the community together to explore options and determine viable public views for the Harley Clark Mansion. We made that commitment to you and to our supporters. We strongly urge you to include several of our supporters in any committee, any city formed committee. We made a commitment to the city and expect the city to make a commitment to all the Evanston citizens who step forward to make Evanston one of the most livable cities in America. We trust you will fulfill your obligation to us. Personally, I wanted to thank the city council again for your vote and I especially wanted to thank the Alderman who took a leadership role in this issue. And I also wanted to thank the mayor and the city manager for opening up the process to engage citizens in the planning for the adaptive reuse of the mansion. The informational website page and the opportunity for email updates in this process are an appreciated first step. However, many larger steps remain to be taken. City council members should remember that all the citizens who showed up at city council last week, I won't look at petitions, yard signs, et cetera, et cetera, do not want any privatizations of the lake parks. And to clarify this, this means that the land underneath the mansion is public land. And it means that the mansion is a public building that the public wants to be retained for public use. And the goal of the city's Harley Clark Public Income Committee should clearly be to plan for the building's adaptive reuse for public use. So we expect that this is the beginning point for our joint discussions on the adaptive reuse of this public building for continued public use. Very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, all right, Mary?
Hi, Mary Rosinski, 1729, Chancellor. I also am here on partner in No Park Sale and thank you and thank you council for working with us to go to the next point. We've got lots of supporters who are sending us information, volunteering help. So we just want to let you know that, you know, in light of what's going on in the city planning, we're hoping that you will come up also with some sort of late front protection plan so that the situations of two and a half acres of park land would not happen again. And also then including, of course, all the citizen input so that it doesn't come as a surprise. Because I think it's the surprises that causes a lot of discontent among people in the county meetings at city council, which aren't quite as pleasant as in my own life. So we also wanted to say that to help prepare to meet with you guys, that we have had meetings that are putting people into different groups that they're interested in. And we are meeting with certain directors of such places as the Chain Mansion, the Burger Mansion, and the Grove to find out how did they get up and going and how they started. So we, you know, we realize there's not enough staff and not enough people in Evanston to do this all by yourself. So we're hoping that by the time there's any sort of public meeting, we'll be able to be a good source of information for you all.
Thank you. That, I believe, really does conclude a couple of comments. Anyone else going once, going twice, comments? I'm sorry. Inductions and logistics.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have been working toward having this conversation this evening for a number of months in talking with you, in talking with you all at the beginning of the city council's term. It made sense to be thinking about the larger priorities for the community. The biggest challenge up till now was finding who would be a good person to work with you to help sort through this. And I reached out to a former colleague of mine in California to see if she would be interested in doing this and fortunately she has. So I'd like to add an interview with Jean Bonander. Jean is the retired city manager of Larksborough, California, where she served as a city manager there for 15 years. Larksborough is a community just north of San Francisco, Marin County. Prior to that was the town administrator in San Antonio and also worked in Mountain View and Palo Alto. She retired in 2009 and since then has worked with communities on strategic planning. She's done some evaluation work of city managers. She's done other organizational work with communities around northern California. She also serves as the executive director of the California City County Streetlight Association. And this is a group, a confederated group of cities and counties around California that work with the local power companies, PG&E Southern California Edison and San Diego Gas and Electric regarding issues regarding power and other issues regarding streetlights. So this is a longstanding joint powers authority around California. So she serves as their, as their part-time executive director. Jean, in my experience in local government, really has a wealth of knowledge and understanding about how communities work, how city councils work, and I thought that she would be a good person to bring here to Evanston to work with all of you. She has, I think, had the opportunity to chat with each of you to kind of get your own insights going in to our discussion this evening. And I'll have her walk through this agenda, which is at your seats, which is a little bit more fleshed out agenda of what she hopes to walk through this evening. We don't see that this is a one evening event, but hopefully is the beginning of the dialogue that hopefully by the end of the calendar year, we'll have some, maybe some plans in place to be able to move forward. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, unless there's any initial questions, I'd like to introduce Jean Bonander.
Thank you very much, Molly. And it's a pleasure to be here in Evanston. This is my second visit and I must tell you that my first visit in March, it was a completely different weather pattern than there is now. And although I understand that this is very different than your normal July, it feels very normal to me coming out of the San Francisco Bay Area where although it has been paraphrased many times, Mark Twain said it was the coldest winter he ever spent was the summer in San Francisco. And that is a true statement. So first thing I want to congratulate you on is that you're already ahead of schedule. So that rarely happens in council meetings. And so I did put time on here. There is, there's no law to it. Let me tell you that we have hoped to wrap up this evening at around 9:30. And as Molly indicated, it is a start to a process. You have goals that you've adopted and they look like this. And so it is not, this is not necessarily an action oriented meeting. If you do move toward any action, you might want to put that on a future agenda for clarification and formal adoption, if that is your, if that is your strategy and your role. So on the agenda this evening, we're going to start taking a look at this adopted set of council goals. And with many of you, we've talked over the past few days about what this list is, what it represents, how many items are on it, what the items mean, and is it doable? And the general sense that I got from you and in my experience in doing strategy planning is that this is an awful lot of goals and there's not a lot of clarity nor their objectives that go along with it. So we're going to start to have the conversation this evening about which of these goals are most important and then what do they mean? And with your reelection in a couple of months ago, you have four years that you'll be working together. And this is a very good time, a very positive time to start working on your choices here, what you can realistically do and what directions you might want to take with some of these items. And what of these items are in your control, what are not? And elements of them are in your controls, what are they and what do you want to do with them? And so the next step after narrowing them down, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, is objectives. What can you, what can you do in the next year? What can you do in the next four years? Or do you want to start to lay a groundwork for multiple years? Some communities do 20-year strategy plans, some do 50-year strategy plans. Some of you may be in the room in 50 years, who knows? But if you aren't, somebody has to start. Somebody has to take that first step and choose a direction for this community to go based on the goals that you've laid out. And then you revisit them from time to time because as you all know, things change constantly. Sometimes, for the most part, they're incremental, but sometimes there's monumental change and you have to be able to deal with that. The next question is probably going to be the heftiest part of your discussion this evening, and that is how to implement. Once you narrow your goals down, how are you going to do it? What resources do you have to tap? And the big one, of course, the 900 pound elephant in the room is money. Where will the money come from to do this? You have, you and many other cities in this nation have gone through a four to five-year financial debacle, much of it not of your choosing. And it has affected your ability to deliver services. You've narrowed those services from what they were five or six years ago. And you are, like most communities, starting to come out of this. But does that give you enough resources to tackle these things in a meaningful way, in a powerful way? It's not just money, it's staffing. You have the right people, the right places to help you implement. You are the policymaking body, you are not the operations body. So you will give policy direction to your chief executive officer and it is his job to implement your strategies. And then the last component of this agenda this evening is how are you going to communicate what you choose to do on these items with your community? What are, what are your vehicles? How will you do it? How will you check in? How will you tell people that something went on a tangent instead of on a straight path? So how will those communications occur? And how will it engage the entire community? Much of what you've got up here affects the entire community. It's, you each have assets in your various wards, but for the most part, the issues that are up here are community-wide. And so the first question I have for you is, are you willing to take a look at this list and try and narrow it down? With many of you, we talked about trying to create two tracks here. One is a capital and infrastructure track and the other is a programmatic track. And is it reasonable to try and identify three priorities out of these lists on each of those tracks for you to really start working on? And are these your highest priorities? So that's my first question to you. Here is your list. It is in alphabetical order as nearly as I can tell. So, and there are many ways to look at this list because, because there are, some of these items could be subsets of other items. And if that makes sense to you, then I have a, I've already, based on our conversation, have something for you, for you to look at as a series of choices if you want to narrow it down and look at some of these as a subset. So let me just read them off just for ease of reference and for the public. They are at-risk and at-needs families, capital improvement program planning, climate action plan, development services and design review, economic development, innovation, Northwestern University, police and fire pension funding issues, Robert Brown Center improvements, safety issues, senior programs, services to Latino populations, visual and performing arts and youth services. So my questions to you are, can you separate capital needs and programmatic needs in three each? Can some of the goals be combined? And how are the goals defined? There are many broad topics up here. What do they mean? And in my conversations, there were a lot of different meanings and so what's around there is important. Yes?
Yeah, I think the question about dividing between capital needs and programmatic needs is an important one. But I also think, you just said something a few minutes ago that is, I think, really important and may probably is lost on most of the people in the room and particularly the people around this table. The notion of being policymaking versus operational. And that group, I think, that grouping also can be broken down between policy and operational. So are you, is it really a policymaking body or is this body really operational in the weeds? And that divides out very nicely in this. And that's why, probably part of the reason why this list is so long and hasn't been clumped together is because people are too focused on operational and not policy. So I think, like I said, in addition to the capital needs and programmatic, but looking at policy versus operational. So I appreciate you saying that earlier. I think that is a key thing that we don't really view as much as policymakers as really in the weeds and tampering hands on the data devices. So thank you for that.
Other comments at this point?
We did talk about that if we were going to have this kind of division.
I think we've actually, you know, I think you said something about, you know, type, you know, fewer amenities or fewer having to compromise some of our, some of our services. But really, we've, we've made some great gains in like healthcare with the, what do we call it, that health center. Climate action has come a long way. Our 301 service has been a big success. We've had great success in affordable housing. We really have, I think, been active in bringing new and better services. And I think that we obviously want to continue that and get some more structure to it. But I think we've been very, I don't know that we've compromised so much as just to actually expand and really do things a lot better and more efficiently and with more, with more money.
I think you're right on the money on that. I don't think we've gotten rid of anything, we've just added. So you have more and more, even though you have less and less money. So I think you're exactly right, Mark, that we've not taken anything away, we've just added more on.
Well, I think we, I think, yes, we can in terms of separating the capital needs, I think, and programmatic needs. I think that needs to be done. I also think that we need to very carefully look at the definitions because I think that they mean something different to each one of us around the table. And until we all get on the same page, you know, it causes for maybe a little chaos and confusion sometimes, so.
Yes, other comments? Okay, then, is there anything missing from this list? Hold on to that thought and there will have to go be an opportunity coming up. Give me a moment here and let's move these over here.
Jean?
Yes.
I've always been concerned about when we were doing the council goals. I think you, Alderman Holmes and I made a reference to our concern about crime. Somehow or another, it ended up there as a safety issue. And I think that's kind of a euphemism that doesn't quite address the detail of some of my concerns with this. I think we're doing a great job. We have the same problem with other communities with guns, et cetera. I think our police department is pretty much on top of things. But I, I just would, I would just like to see either a subset or the addition of crime prevention.
Okay, good point. Other comments? Yes?
First, are we on a first-name basis in this intimate setting? It's kind of fun to be sitting next to colleagues that don't usually sit next to you. But part of-
It would be easier for me if you were on.
Hi, thanks, Jean. Getting to crime prevention, I see a big part of crime prevention being also workforce development and employment. And that would be an important goal that really isn't explicit in our 2013 council goals. I know the mayor's working on some initiatives in workforce development, but it's missing as a part of our goals, but it is part of crime prevention.
I didn't bring that up, Jean, because I think it's the most important issue. It's just something that I've been meaning to say for a long time and I keep overlooking saying it. So it has nothing to do with being mentioned first as being the most urgent and critical. I just wanted to make a point.
Those will be your decisions and so you're the ones to get to pick the most critical things. And, you know, basically this boils down to what do you want to get done? What do you want to accomplish in the next year or the next four years? And you can't do it frankly with a list like that. You can't do it. This is a great list of talking points, but action, planning, management. So I did take the liberty of trying to give you something to work with on capital improvement program and planning goals and programmatic goals. And then to Colleen's point, I took a stab at operational goals. What on the, what on the list of the council's goals appeared to be, to be operational in nature? And can you just turn those over to staff and ask staff to start working on them as part of their budget? as part of their budget planning and goals? So let's take a look. On the capital improvement program and planning goals, possible priorities. You have enterprise, your water utility, sewer utility, your streets, facilities. How many facilities? What condition are they in? Which one should be addressed first, second, and third? Trees, parks, open space access points. And some of this detail is not on this list. So just so you know, I took this one here, capital improvement program planning, and kind of mapped out what I know. And I certainly don't know everything about Evansville. But these seem to be issues that I heard in my conversations with you on an individual basis. Some of you felt that some of these capital issues were in pretty good shape, and that the staff had a plan and was working on it, and things were moving along. In other areas, they're not. And these are all big-ticket items. So these are, as you look into the future, these things are going to be here 50 years from now. And so how do you maintain them, expand them, deal with any sort of environmental issues? You know, I come from California, and they're really good at the state level imposing new regulations and rules on public sector without giving you any money or time to do it. So I don't know if it's like that in Illinois, but I hope not, for your sake. But these are big-ticket items, and they'll be around a long time. Evansville is enjoying its 150th year of existence. And should there be cities 150 years from now, there will be needs for things like this. So are those in pieces? On the programmatic side, possible priorities include economic development. This is probably the most sensitive one, because I think everyone in this room has a different perspective on what economic development is. What is it? What does it mean to you? What does it mean to Evansville? Family services, we've had a great many goals here that talked about quality-of-life kinds of issues. How can we help those in need? How can we deliver services in the health and human services and recreational sides? So what does that look like? It can't all be rolled up into one, but among these, which are the most important? So if family services are quality-of-life issues, at-risk, at-needs families, senior program services to Latino populations, youth services, safety services, this may not be the right place for safety services, but I couldn't really find a good spot for it. So I stuck it here for right now, and visual and performing arts. And then over here on operations goals, are these the council goals? Are they direction to staff? And there's the climate action plan, development services and design review, innovation, police and fire pension funding issues. And then what is the city's relationship with Northwestern? And how does that fit into the goals? So that's another one, like economic development. Everyone has a different perspective on the relationship with Northwestern. So what does that look like? So what do you think? Am I missing something here?
What about technology? I don't see that anyplace.
Innovation.
And I missed technology?
I think it's under innovation.
I can't see that. Basically, it's not innovation anymore. It is.
So thoughts?
Yeah, so something you said at the very beginning, and I guess it permeates everything, but it's not really directly addressed, is financial responsibility and having financial order house in order. And we don't focus on it, and it theoretically is something everyone says that's important, but it doesn't really rise to the top. And what you said early on is, without that, nothing else really can happen unless you go, you make the choice to be in debt, which then you're not physically responsible. So I'm not sure where that rolls into all of this, or is it the major, either the bedrock or the umbrella? But clearly, it's not addressed as strongly as it needs to be if we want to do all these other things.
It's overarching. It covers everything.
But we don't address it policy-wise, really.
All right, then you got to put it at the top.
I mean, because it's not, because all these other things, you know, it's the municipal services that are the core municipal services under capital improvement. And all the other programmatic are sort of special interest pieces, and no one really focuses on how are we going to pay for all of those? We talk about it at budget season, but then really being, how are we going to be financially responsible for doing all of these things? It's kind of like when people don't talk about their retirement planning. They spend more time planning their vacation than they do about retirement. That's exactly what we do here. So I think that's extremely important.
Other thoughts? Does this, does this framework make sense to you? Am I missing something here? In the capital improvement planning and goals, is there anything else in here that you, in terms of a topic area? We'll get to how you pay for things. And again, that will be your decision. But is there anything else missing here on the capital improvement program?
I think that's where technology belongs. We spend an enormous amount of money. And while do we bond for some of our technology infrastructure? For example, all of our huge purchases?
We've had debt issued over time, I think, with the last financial system, Marty. But we have not, I don't think it was a bond per se.
Right, but this last time around, we didn't issue debt because the systems don't last long enough for a 20-year bond. But we did, we did do debt. It was just through our parking fund, so a shorter-term note. So we're still doing debt.
And what do others think about Ann's technology?
Can I just add one thing to that? When I'm thinking of technology, I'm thinking of the hundreds of thousands of dollars we spend on licensing and software and things like that. And we are making a major shift right now, going from J.D. Edwards to, I don't even remember the name of the new thing.
New World.
What?
New World.
New World. And I mean, do we pay that out of the general fund?
And then do the enterprises pay a portion of share of the use?
Oh, they do, yes, they do.
But by and large, out of the general fund.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think Ann is correct in having it under capital improvement program, because it's something that we have to maintain. We have to stay current on, in the same way you have to continue to maintain your sewer utilities and your streets and your trees, all of those things. Technology, as it's defined, is now part of how we run the city. And so, I mean, if we neglect it, and in the past it has been neglected, then you spend an enormous amount of money putting it, bringing it back up to current, what's current or state-of-the-art. So it can be in lots of different places, but in the sense of it being a, something that helps us run the city, and the city actually runs on, then it's capital improvement, in my mind. Because we spend an enormous amount of money on it, and we couldn't operate without it.
And it's included in almost everything that's up there.
Yeah, it runs us.
We don't depreciate it, though. It's not like another fixed asset, but it's a service we're buying. It's a purchased service.
But there are hardware pieces with it. You know, the dynamics are changing. You probably, Marty, AS400s or larger computers probably were depreciated. You know, that's less the case. I mean, we're looking at the cloud, you know, where we're not buying, in some cases, the hardware. The hardware is residing with a third party. I think it makes sense to talk about, because it's evolving. And we've not, we've talked a little bit about the finance system as we made that shift. But then there's larger strategic issues, which we'd be happy to bring to the council and talk about, because we're trying to stay ahead. I mean, certainly, again, from an operational perspective, I understand the council's desire to stay on top of this. But there are financial issues and changes to how we're spending the money, which certainly could be a policy discussion.
I mean, there's also fiber optic system to think about.
Right, and largely, we've made, and that is capital, and largely, that investment has been made. So we're lucky to have a fiber network within a community that serves the city facilities, but there's still been hardware that periodically has to be changed out, but it connects it all together.
And it runs across all the utilities and the police department and the fire department?
Citywide.
Is your fiber optic network considered a utility?
No, it's, we have fiber with Northwestern. It's actually their fiber loop. When it was constructed, we wisely, otherwise wisely, decided to join the band.
Okay, so technology, infrastructure, then, is, this is a good place for it? Do I see a?
I don't see that it could hurt. I didn't know it was controversial.
I think it is controversial. I think we're just exploring and asking questions, and I don't think it's one side or the other.
Goodness, that's where it was. Question. Yeah, this is a challenging one, because the pace of technology has accelerated so much faster than, for instance, the type of material that you would use for a sewer line or a water line. Where, you know, still in place after 50 years, if you had a 50-year-old computer, it would be worth a bunch of money, as a historic item right now, so.
Yeah, sewers have been in place for a long.
Yeah, well, and most communities do. So technology, anything else that's missing? And we put technology over there on the operations side, too.
And you'll flesh out the facilities as far as naming names?
I think that would be very helpful, especially on what your perceptions are of which of these are the most important investment needs for the city. And Wally, maybe you could talk a little bit about, like, the water and the sewer and the streets? And just, I know you do this as part of your budget process, but.
Sure, I mean, I think the council's largely familiar with the issues on the water and sewer side. We've made a substantial investment on the sewer side a number of years back, which we're now coming to the end of actually paying off that debt. So I think we feel pretty confident that the sewer infrastructure is in pretty good shape. We've not done that same work with the water infrastructure, the distribution infrastructure. Dave Stonebeck was at AMPW, was at his last meeting, and kind of gave a broad overview of next steps with that. So that, I think, is more in the forefront on a priority basis than the sewer infrastructure. On streets, we've invested, Marty left the room. About $2.5 million in general fund reserves over the last couple of years for street paving projects, in addition to monies that we have from other places. So that's remained a priority. My sense from the council is there's still work to be done on streets. You know, and Jean, probably in addition to streets, we probably also need to put sidewalks, because we've done some, and alleys. We've done some work, there's some longstanding programs with sidewalk replacement, where we have a 50-50 program the council's talked about, sort of intermediate sidewalk repairs. But I think there's still the desire to have more broad-based sidewalk replacement. In addition to some parts of the community that still don't have sidewalks. So we would need, so I think there's lots of issues there. On the facility side, you know, we.
Alderman, right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to mention, and I don't remember if we mentioned this this morning with Jean, but our staff, Public Works, has a great system in place for analyzing the condition of the streets.
Right.
And it's revisited, I think, every five years to see, you know, what's been taken care of and what needs to be repaired or regained. So we do have a process in place for taking care of the very important business of streets.
And you probably talked about these items quite a bit during your budget process.
And otherwise?
One of the challenges is, they're big and they're long-term, and I'm sure the public just wants to know that you are taking care of them, that, so they don't have to worry about it. And that's just, you know, there's nothing thrilling about infrastructure.
It's not sexy.
It's not sexy. It's, but, you know, people need it, they rely on it, they don't want to think about it. But it is, it is really part of the underpinning of your organization the same way that public safety is.
With regard to streets, I think that's a particular of interest throughout the city. I don't, I often feel that we're not keeping pace, that we're actually losing ground with the amount of money we set aside for streets. We do things, we do them very smart, as far as coordinating with sewer projects and other things like that, or utilities on streets and all that. We're very well together and make the best use of the money we do have. But I still think we're losing ground, because we're just not putting that much money to it. Also, for my ward and maybe some others, it's a ward in transition. It's gone from a lot of older families or seniors to a lot of homes with large number of children. We've seen actually additions to one of the elementary schools. And what was once okay, streets without sidewalks, they're becoming a big concern because we have toddlers and young people walking now rather than people driving places. So those two things, I think, are something we really need to look at, because we're not, we're losing ground.
When you say, Mark, when you say we're not keeping pace, I'm not understanding what you mean. I mean, because I think that over the last several years, the whole drive around with the Public Works Director to find out which streets you set as priority in your own ward, that, you know, you might have 10 streets, but you can't do 10 streets in your ward. You set priorities in which streets you want to go. And then those go on the list for the next year and the next year, you know, until you get them all done.
But it seems like there's such deterioration that, you know, the list just keeps getting bigger every year. I mean, I know that it really is, it's a five-year list, but, you know, I, you know, sometimes I add things to the list that weren't even on there. All of a sudden, an intersection crumbles for whatever reason, you know, weather or salt or whatever. And I just think there are just so many things, it's often, it seems like the work we do sometimes on with the asphalt and repair doesn't last. It just, you know, has a very short life. And, you know, I know we're doing the best we can with our money. And like I said, I think our streets and repair services are very wise with the money that we give them, very smart in making that efficient. But it just seems to me that things are crumbling at a faster rate than we're able to address them.
I absolutely agree with Mark. And I, because I did, part of the reason is I did my drive around today. And there are, you know, I have to make choices, like making choices between, you know, I'm picking two streets out of, you know, 10 to 15 that are in deplorable condition. And I know that there are similar-conditioned streets in all the wards, because, you know, I travel out. So it, I agree that the staff is doing the best with what we're giving them. But as far as streets, and again, going back to facilities as well, I still feel like we're not giving them enough to keep pace with, you know, maintaining our physical assets.
Is there a percent, you know, what percentage of the budget is used for infrastructure? And what is optimal compared to other communities? And what is the best practice? Oh, sorry, I thought it was a round, so it was like jumping. I apologize for jumping in front of you, Alderman Grover. So I think that looking at the percentage of that infrastructure amount for the overall budget compared to what are we doing on family services, visual, performing arts? And what really is, what other communities that have good infrastructure, what are they doing? I think that would be a good number to have, because I think exactly right that we don't do a good enough job of putting enough money in the infrastructure piece.
I agree. At the same time, I like what we've been able to do is we do some street resurfacing in connection with water main replacement or sewer repair, that we've also been adding other types of infrastructure, that is, the bike infrastructure. And I'd like us to think about too, adding sidewalks where they're missing, especially in connection with walks to school in the neighborhoods where the absence of sidewalks impedes its livability and walkability. And there's, there are large parts of Evansville that have missing sidewalks. We have a, we have this, what's it?
Multi, multi.
Transportation plan that identified.
Right.
So we have an assessment already of these.
You said the magic words, water main replacement.
Right.
And I would like to remind everybody, I think water's very sexy. People do expect water when they turn the tap on. And the sewers are. People do expect water when they turn the tap on, and the sewers are in pretty good shape, and as we pay off the sewer debt, if we put that money into the water utility, it would not raise the amount that people are paying now, and we could pay our water bills and have fewer water main breaks. So I would strongly suggest that not only we put water up there, but we figure out right now that we could indeed pay for it without increasing the overall tax burden on anyone.
Is that not correct, Wally?
If you combine water and sewer, yes.
I'd just like to speak on behalf of staff. Public Works is my favorite thing. I think streets and sewers and water is very sexy, and I think they've done, I think they've done a fabulous job, and I'm only talking about paving. We think of what we have done in the last few years. We did Ridge Avenue for God's sakes. We did Chicago Avenue. We're doing Jave Street.
Share, share and row.
If you, share it and row.
Share it and row.
But, I mean, I mean, it's just, it's been amazing, some of the work that we've done, plus some of the neighborhood streets. So for those of you who have, get streets in your ward, you maybe should keep on top of it a little more because my streets are looking really good. Dodge, Dodge looks fabulous. We have done major thoroughfares, major. I mean, you don't do all of Dodge, you don't do all of Ridge. First of all, to do ten streets in your ward in one season is the most disruptive thing you could possibly do.
Well, I'm not suggesting that.
No, no, but I'm just saying there, there is a strategy to doing streets. There's a strategy and, and...
I'd like to say to that, if, I mean, if you look at the multi-modal transportation, the six ward is by far has the few, most missing sidewalks, the most, was the most ADA uncompliant, practically, you know, very few paved alleys with sewers. And it truly is, but our streets are residential and they don't, you know, Central Street is primarily all residential streets, and there are a lot of them. But I, I, you know, I think, I've worked very hard to get money toward that, but for instance, last, end of, about a year ago, we had a major water main break on substitute. It didn't really need paving, but all of a sudden, we had a sort of catastrophe, we had fourteen water breaks in the course of a couple of weeks. That said, we, we addressed that infrastructure issue, which wasn't anywhere on the radar as far as I know. And then, of course, this year, we capitalized on the resurfacing, widening some of the sidewalks and making it very nice, but, you know, it was all unexpected expenses for the city. It was a one point five million dollar expense that we weren't anticipating.
That here.
That here.
Well, I, I, I agree with everyone. I mean, I think we should, no, I mean, in the sense that, and I, two hours ago, I was driving around New Jersey streets which felt like glass. I mean, they're smooth, and they have a winter climate too. So, but I, I think a couple of things. One, there was very long-term neglect for our streets. I mean, I'm talking decades of neglect. And I agree with Ann, viaducts are wonderful. I, they're very sexy. We got new viaducts this year. But I, but I do agree with Colleen in the sense of understanding, you know, what is the standard or, you know, what's a, you know, but we have, we're a more complex community. I think that we have, we are doing things much smarter than we ever did before. And we also, you know, it's not just who agitates. One of the best things we did was we did this thorough analysis of our streets, and there was a scientific method to prioritizing what the condition was of each of those, of all of the streets. And then each alderman gets a list of equally bad streets, and then it turns into choose which of these equally bad streets you would like to have done. So it's not just because it used to be that way, but it's not that way anymore that it was.
But you don't think we use the analysis?
Oh, we do use the analysis, but that's my point.
And it's refreshed.
It is, yes, but, yeah.
Just something to sum something, maybe it'll get us back to the actual goals. And, and I was waiting for Alderman Ray to say that. Part of in doing the one-ful job of the infrastructure is that we have staff that goes out and gets additional dollars in grants, and maybe a goal that we can put, and I don't know how much time, I think it's a great question to ask, how many dollars and what percentage of, of our budget goes towards though, you know, the infrastructure, but how much actual staff time are we donating towards going out to get actual grants? And somewhere on there, maybe we put a goal to increase staff time to, if, if there's more out there, can we get more grants to improve our infrastructure is my question.
Yeah, I think that's a great job of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And there's a pretty finite set of money. I mean, we just, we just have to make sure that when it's available, we just pay, it's mostly all money from the state.
Right.
Occasionally, there's random something or another.
For lots of things.
Well, and most of the time, if the state is going to give you money, they want it on arterials or, or regional blue, they're spending it on your neighborhood streets. And one, one question for you, are all of your streets public streets or any private streets?
We have just a small number, and they take care of themselves.
Okay, so they don't ask you for assistance?
When they do, we explain that they take care of themselves. We explain it to them.
And, and the city has bought back most of the state roads that were here. I don't know a hundred percent of it. The lion's share of the state roads, the city bought back, thinking that we could maintain them better than the state had online.
But we got money to repay with.
For the first, so it was starting equally.
Okay, well, will we talk a little bit about facilities?
Well, I mean, facilities run the whole gamut, and I think that's one of our challenges is that we've been talking about two in recent weeks, Harley Clark and, of the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, but those are kind of on the medium, small side. We have the Lorraine H. Ward Civic Center, which I think we have, have stabilized with the roof and with some maintenance, but there are still serious issues, longer-term issues.
Civic Center, where we are now.
Where we are now, City Hall. And, and that, you know, is tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions, depending on what the plan would be to work on it. So I'm concerned certainly about this building. We've talked again about Harley Clark and Noyes, which we don't, I think, need to talk too much more about tonight. We have other community centers that are in varying states of need for repair, so to list them, Robert Crown, and we've had an initiative moving forward on Robert Crown, Chandler Newberger, the Levy Center, and Fleetwood Jordan. So those, and so those are our main community centers. You add then also an ecology center, and a police-fire headquarters, and five fire stations. We've done some major work on fire stations in the last several years, the ones that weren't rebuilt are now having some needs. The police-fire headquarters is in okay shape, but has some needs to them as well. So, you know, as we look at, at those major facilities, you know, some prioritization of this building itself will be a huge undertaking, just the discussion about what the council wants to do with this building. I mean, does it make sense to repurpose this building? Does it make sense to look at additional construction on the footprint of property here to supplement or be part of a larger project? All of those things we really haven't talked about. When I arrived here four years ago, there was a scaffolding around this building that had been there for ten years because the...
Not that happened.
That's what staff tells me, ten years.
About four. They were trying to scare you.
So, a long time.
Nine years.
Nine years, okay.
Service Center, Service Center, Public Works Service Center.
A Public Works Service Center, which we've spent quite a bit of money on over the last several years. But anyway, so those are, you know, those I think are the main, off the top of my head, are the main centers, and we need to talk about them.
The water, and, and water treatment plant.
Water treatment plant.
Water treatment plant.
Our most prized asset.
We don't treat source, thank goodness.
Wally, could you tell us how much money you think the civic center needs? I mean, just to, you think it's in pretty good shape for us to go forward for, until we decide to do something differently?
I mean, I think the building itself is, is very solid. It's the, the heating and air conditioning systems, it's the electrical systems, the plumbing systems, those are the, the issues. I mean, the, the two bathrooms, they cost us four hundred thousand dollars. And that's, and that was just to replace plumbing and, you know, to bring them to some semblance of what you might find in a class B office building. I mean, so that's just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, I, I, I think there are opportunities to have a larger discussion, not this evening, about, you know, perhaps other uses for this building that would include municipal uses, municipal office uses, but perhaps not for the entire building, but that's, that's a big, big discussion.
Sure. Well, this is, you know, if you, if you add it all up on an estimate basis...
Please don't.
I won't, but it is, it is going to be multi-million dollar.
Hundreds of millions. But I guess that, what you just said, that's what alarms me the most, is that we don't add it all up.
Colleen, we can't do it all.
No, no, I know, I know we can't, I know we can't do it all, but that's the exact point, is that we put our head in the sand versus saying, let's add it all up and stop doing it piecemeal. Who yells the loudest? It's what would it really cost? And, and that's, that's where we, we always fall down, is we really don't add up where all the problems are and where, how much things are going to cost. The civic center alone, you, you know, your first number out was tens of millions of dollars easily, and if you start looking at this list, it is really frightening and we need to start thinking long-term about this list and the capital improvement list, and we don't. We do it on an annual basis and we don't think long-term.
Judy, and then Jane.
Well, I think one of the things that's helpful about the discussion is to be thinking long-term, and that's what I'm trying to do with everything. I'm trying to look fifty, fifty years down the road. I mean, do we take that list and do we keep the list of the municipal buildings in one list and the park buildings in another list? Do we think about privatizing our, our parks department, for example?
We dragged that last week, didn't we?
Well, separating, but, but separating it out into its own, its own taxing, taxing authority. And I think that's worth, that's worth thinking about as we try to figure out how we're going to deal with the costs involved. I, I can't, I mean, I suppose I can figure out ten million dollars into these buildings, into this building, but the other buildings, I'm not quite sure about what exactly they need, I don't think.
Well, and this, again, this is at the very beginning of the process. You don't, you don't know what, what is hidden behind the walls here. And so Jane is going to be next, and then Melissa and then Dolores. But I've just, one comment here, one of the cities I've worked with is the city of Mountainview, and their eighty million dollar civic center project that they completed when I, when I was working there in the eighties was a result of a, a small remodel of the employee kitchen.
That's condition.
That's how it started, you know, that's how it started, and that's when they found the asbestos and wood, and, and affected the infrastructure, the road itself was no longer viable, and had to tear the whole thing down. And that's unexpected, and that's not good, not good. So you know that you've got these issues and you know that they're going to be a challenge, and you need to set priorities on these too because you can't do everything at once. And so with that, Jane.
Yeah, in our house, we call that Project Creep.
Yeah.
And it happens far too often. I think having decided for the time being that we want to keep all of those facilities as city property, that it is tough to find the balance between long-term budgeting issues and wanting to maintain them so that they don't fall apart, so that we have obligations to, to keep our assets in some kind of serviceable condition if we're going to keep our assets. And I think the key here would be to maximize their use and see if there are ways that we can, if we're going to keep and invest, keep investing in these buildings and these facilities, how can we maximize their use for the most residents to get the best bang for our buck with careful, long-term planning.
But you need to know how much it is.
Right. With careful, long-term planning, we do work from a five-year capital improvement program that helps us, I think, with some of this budget. It helps us, it doesn't determine it.
I think Melissa's, Melissa may need...
I, I'd like to say one thing. Colleen, we did that with the streets. The streets cost one hundred and eighty-three million dollars. That was the amount of repairs we needed, was under Julia Carroll. That's when our, that our Public Works Department went out and did an analysis of every single street, it's the one that Alderman Ray is referring to, a scientific analysis based on civil engineering to determine the quality of the underlayment, every aspect of the street, all the way down to the dirt. And then they came back with the prioritization. Every street in this city has a number attached to it that tells us what is the quality of the layer of that street. And the list that you get as alderman that tells you these are the streets that are like the five streets that are in the worst condition...
I'm talking about the buildings of the streets.
No, I know, but let me finish what I'm saying. But you said we never do that, and that's absolutely not true.
Not with this, the buildings.
No, but I, no, you said we never do it as a council, and we do do it. We did it.
We did it with the buildings, is my point.
Can I, can I finish?
You're, you're saying what I said was different than what I said.
No, you said we never do this, and I'm saying, we did do it. We did it with our streets, and we now have a very intelligent process. It's why we have Dodge done, it's why we have Ridge done. No, we haven't done it with the facilities yet, but we have done it as a city council. We have done it as a city council. The process. We did a total analysis of, of public works project that we needed to do with a scientific study, with an analysis by our professional staff that then we now operate from, and we have been operating from it for five or six years.
And we did it with the sewers too?
Yes, we did.
We knew exactly what it was.
Right, and twenty years ago, Ann, you might have been on the council at that time when, when, well, maybe not, when, when Ned Lotterbock led that, that whole plan. So we have done it in the past, and, you know, we're starting from the beginning now on a number of things. You know, I'm tired of being accused of all this stuff. I'd like to just move forward, okay?
Very good, thank you. Dolores?
Well, I wanted to support what Colleen said in terms of, I think that we do need to know the cost and the reason why, basically, just what you just said.
We've done it before. Let's find out with the numbers.
Well, yeah, we've done it before, but I don't think we've not done it with, we have not done it with the facilities. I think we started two years ago, when Wally brought us three buildings, Chandler, Noyes, and Harley Clark. That was the beginning, in my opinion.
It was.
But I think that what we, and I'm going back now to definitions because I don't think that we all understand it in this, maybe, I want to say understand. I don't think we all apply it in the same way in terms of what needs to be done and how that can work. You mentioned public-private, all privatized, you know, maybe if citizens, because that's what we seem to want to, to make sure that the citizens understand the cost that it would take or the money that it would take to do some of these things, and, you know, is this really what we want to do as a city?
I didn't mean privatize it. I, I meant establish in a separate park district.
So, so Jane, just to help us move forward from this point.
When you said privatize it, we thought you meant privatize.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't do it.
Is very helpful for persons to think citizen.
Thank you. So maybe just help us to move forward with this point, will put as a priority, our goal that we'll figure out the capital.
If you don't mind, Peter, I'm on the list.
Well, so, as I was saying, to help us move forward from this point is to take us
on the conversations, I hear us all saying is to figure out the cost of each of these facilities as a, as a goal.
And, you know, this, this issue here, keep or other options, those are policy issues too that the council needs to, to tackle, and it's, it may not be the first step in this, but, but once you identify what your priorities are on this list, and it sounds like we've partially done that already, then start to add the numbers together and then talk about what, what your options really are. And that's when you get to the, how much money will it cost? Are there resources that we could have? Do we have the time and staff to do it? Is there federal funding or state funding that we could find? Are we going to have to raise taxes? Is there a private entity that could do something that we would appreciate and would, it work for us? And so, and have those discussions in the community is all part of that process.
And...
Following up on Jane's comments and what you're talking about right now, private entities, et cetera, we have a, had a proposal out for a, a public-private partnership at James Park to redevelop the entire...
to redevelop the entire, I mean, correct my verbiage if it's correct, to develop an entire community center, sports center, ice rink, et cetera. Robert Crown, I'm sorry, Robert. What did I say? James Park. Well, because I got James Park on the brain because here's why, here's why. Today, I got delivered by Federal Express, a prospectus, this thick spiral, very fancy, put together from David Hudgens, who is proposing the building of a private sports center at James Park that will, I mean, this, this is a document, this thing, that will be run by a private entity that will eventually be turned over, this is the proposal, to the city and the city will own it and of course fix it and put it in a roof in twenty years. And it seems to me before one more step is taken, there needs to be an intervention between the Robert Crown people and the James Park people to bring them together if they're, if, if either party or both party are serious. I mean, this, this thing with James Park appears totally out of control at this point and, I mean, it just seems to be the most obvious opportunity. Now, I'm sure there are people in this room who know a lot more about this than I do just because it's in James Park and in my work, but I, I did, it must weigh five pounds, the proposal. So what does, what do, what do council members have to say about this?
Well, you're not going to discuss that this evening, so.
Okay, but bringing, bringing the opportunities together to make more financial sense because a lot of it is the same activity going on in both locations.
I think maybe if we could synthesize this green page into a goal, like one goal, basically, I guess, do what Melissa was describing with the street project is to take each, each asset and get a sense of what the cost is going to be to put it in usable condition, number one, and number two, maintain it. So it's really two components, going forward, what's it going to cost and what's it going to cost to get us there? And I think the other important component is what it's bringing in and what it could bring in. So, you know, Crown and Noyes and Chandler bring in money, Harley Clark generally doesn't.
A dollar a year.
A dollar. But, you know, to, to kind of make some, obviously fire stations don't bring in cash. But to do, you know, analysis of each of these assets, so we can kind of take those and it will help, in fact, I think it'll help facilitate the analysis and the prioritization. Not to say that any of them need to be neglected, but to Colleen's point, I think it's going to be important to have the numbers, the big numbers and the big scary numbers so we can take a look at it and say, okay, well, here's how I'm going to save for college, here's how I'm going to save for retirement. It's, it's a long-term plan and, you know, we're not going to go out and buy all new all of these things in the next fifty years. Hopefully, we're going to maintain the vast majority of those. So, so my view of that goal is to, you know, analysis of each of the assets and, you know, to assist us in the going forward policy.
Briefly, Judy and then Colleen and then I'm going to pause for a minute. We're going to talk about what Colleen said, what her priorities are.
Yeah, I, I agree with Don, but I also want to figure out what is the potential income from each of the assets. And that, that in, sort of also focuses on, on program, the facilities that are underutilized. Harley Clark is an obvious example of that. Perhaps another good example of that. But to look at, so we have that information as well that we're talking about potential. I wanted to say one other thing. We used to rent out the coach house at Harley Clark and now it's totally unrentable because we haven't maintained it.
Well, in that regard, because we, we chose to use other, the money for other assets because we couldn't afford it because we're in financial problems. But is there any, I don't think we've done any, correct me if I'm wrong, people have been on the council a lot longer. We talk about public-private partnerships, but we really don't do them. And the reason why we don't do them is because we have special interests that get in a fury when we, when we try to do a public-private partnership. I'm not sure that we've had one successful one here in town at all. I mean, there's, across the country, there's really examples of good public-private partnerships. I don't think it's actually, you know, I, four years ago, I thought it was doable. I thought it was doable with Crown, I don't any longer. I don't think it's actually a, a, a workable mechanism here in this community to do public-private because it's never been done and there's too much angst about the notion of any, any entity partnering with us. So does anybody know of any successful public-private partnership that's happened here in the community?
Define, there, I, I realized, I was thinking of privatizing, but then I realized you're saying public-private. So define public-private.
See, I think that's the issue is that we don't have a good idea of what we mean by public-private partnership. You had the, was it a year ago, the full day at the NLC about public-private partnerships?
Yep, and I shared all that, yeah.
And, and you've got the information, maybe you can share it back with us again. And I think, didn't you understand there's a range of what we mean when we talk about public-private partnership and it's not necessarily privatizing service, it's not necessarily sale of an asset. There's a wide mix of ways in which we can engage in a public.
Yeah, and I'm saying we've, we've never done any of them.
Well, our garages, the, the, I think Anne is right, French Shore is a good one.
And our garage.
In terms of our portfolio, how long have we been doing that? That's a good public.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't think it is.
Quick timeout. Wally, could you talk, just to finish up this list, talk a little bit about trees, park, open space access points?
Sure, trees, you know, I think we have a long history of, of, of funding our trees. Our challenge has been disease and the maple, I guess it was the maples and then now is the. Elms and now the ash trees.
It was gypsy moss and then it was, well, dachshund always.
And then the emerald, emerald ash borer has been late. So I think our challenge, we were doing just fine before all that occurred and now public-private partnerships, we're trying to raise twenty-five thousand dollars by August thirtieth to help plant two-hundred-and-fifty more trees to speed the replacement of the trees that have been cut down, that have been infected under disease. So, so that.
This is a long-term asset here too and a long-term cost. You know, so trees do have lifespans, but they do tend to be long. The disease can be a, a real shock.
Park, open space access points, you know, parks, we, we have a spattering of, of capital projects with parks. You probably also need to add the lakefront, although the lakefront is a, is a park strictly speaking. So that's been a mixed bag over time. Open space, not in a California sense, I don't think we really have. There's a, there's a county forest preserve district, which we'll talk about some other time. And then access points from like a trail perspective, things like that. That's mostly lakefront for us.
So open space, I should work on?
No, we have a zoning category of open space and we need to leave that in.
So what I would like you to do at this point is look at this from a standpoint of priorities, what we talked about at the very beginning, capital improvement. And this is part of your capital improvement. So the facilities is this list is this list over here, okay? So, and then programmatic, let's talk a little bit about, about what this means. Economic development.
Jean, before you get off that, I guess there's one kind of facility that you haven't talked about. That's facilities we don't have. And so.
Future facilities.
Future facilities. So we, we've, we've talked about an arts, an additional arts facility or two. We've, I, I think the community will likely have needs for additional community center, probably to meet community needs over an extended period of time. With the arts, I think there's a need for office space. Would we want to ever get into the business of providing additional office space for nonprofits? So just so that doesn't get lost.
No. Why would you do that?
Okay, well, great. Thank you, glad to hear it. Sure, correct the nonprofit line up.
Jean, what about senior housing?
Under seniors programs.
Well, the housing, I mean, that's going to be something I could ask, but my question is, do you want to deal with other programs or?
Well, we currently don't operate any housing other than the couple of apartments we own, but.
So afford, how do you want to, where do you want to put affordable housing?
Well, I think of the at-risk, at-need families, I mean, this is a larger, yeah. It's a larger, because it's, because it's not just senior housing, but it's all, all types of at-risk.
It's more the advocating for affordable houses. We don't actually provide it.
But, but we're in the big funding business. We're facilitating.
We facilitate it, but we don't own it.
And I understand, and I'm not saying we should, but.
We do a lot of advocating.
Absolutely. And we have to continue to do that if we want to preserve the diversity of our community.
But it doesn't put the millions in.
Thank you for adding the future.
My pleasure, so.
Other people.
Okay, here's what we're going to do now.
It's the job. We have to do that.
I'm going to give you each, each of you elected officials a sheet with some sticky dots on it. And you get to get up and wander around a little bit, it's getting close to break time, so I'll monitor that as well. You can put three sticky dots, you can't, and here are the rules.
We can't tear them in half?
Three sticky dots on the capital improvement priorities and the facilities is that. Three sticky dots on the programmatic goals, on the, on the operations goals. We didn't get to talking about those and, and so you need to take another look at those and see if they're appropriate. Okay, the rules on the sticky dots are you can't put all three of your dots on one thing.
Put on two.
No, you can't put two dots on one thing. So what we're trying to do is get to three priorities on each one of these. Now, you're going to have more than three sticky dots and so, and this is, there's an honor system to this too because I didn't bring my scissors to clip up and give you the exact number. Yes, questions?
Does that mean one per sheet or one per, like water utility, you can't put two there? Like a, like a double vote for water utility?
No, you can't double.
But you could put more than?
Yes, you can, Mark, as long as it's the water.
You get, you get three on CID and three on programmatic, right?
And then when we finish this, I want you to tell me whether any, or, or, maybe I should ask you this first. If anything that's on that list should be on either of these two lists.
Well, I have a problem with police and fire pensions being an operations goal. I think it would be wonderful for me to be able to tell Wally who should fix any of those. Noy is, is writhing around in agony over this, but Wally, apparently it's up to you. I thought it was more of a political solution.
Well, but it's, it's, it's a funding. I mean, if the council wants to fund beyond what the actuaries tell us as a goal, then it's a matter of coming back either with additional taxes or additional cuts in order to do that. And the council has, has legitimately grappled with that question and.
We did put in more, but I also think it's a political issue and it's up to all of the elected members of the council to be sure that our state reps know that we expect them to help us resolve this.
Yeah, and I'm not sure it fits in well with this sort of design thing.
I don't know where to put it, but it's. It's a huge part of our budget and it's, it's a major, major problem.
Control is just a goal. Because it is what it is.
There's got to be any control. It is an important goal for.
We don't have a choice whether we pay or not.
It is an important goal for you as policymakers is to decide what, what you're going to do with this. And, but it's, it's a, it is a challenge because there are elements in this that are out of your control.
So maybe would it be appropriate to have a programmatic goal that deals with finance? So there's the question of, you know, taxes, general obligation debt, pension debt, you know, what, what are the parameters?
Yes.
I mean, what, we have general parameters now, but we don't really have specific parameters that say, you know, the property tax will only go so high for operations, the property tax for pensions will only go so high, you know, what is the council willing to lay people off in order to have additional dollars for pensions? I mean, we've talked about that kind of in general terms in previous years and you've said no. But has that changed and should there be a more robust sort of financial policy that might help us get through some of these things? So that were the pension issue.
Put more money into it and they lose it in the market and then they tell us you shouldn't have given it to us this year.
This is, this is a really daunting issue and for almost every governmental organization and many privately organized organizations as well. I think, I think Wally's suggestion makes a lot of sense.
And we'll see how it plays out in the voting.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it is, it is your policy issue to decide, you know, how you want to pay for this stuff. And, and it's a big one, it's a, it's a really big one. And so there are lots of options, but you have to talk those out and that's something that the community is going to need to acquire an understanding of too so they know how much you've grappled with us to, to come up with whatever policy you choose to, to select.
Jean, I just want to say something about Colleen's comments and refer people just, just for their own edification. I just went through the two thousand and eleven capital budget. And that budget shows, I mean, we do associate costs. Shows previ, as of two thousand and eleven, I don't think, I have the two thousand and twelve here. As of two thousand and eleven, capital improvement plan, previously approved capital projects was twenty million, six hundred forty-six thousand. Reauthorized remaining two thousand and ten, eleven cario, cario project, three million, four hundred and sixteen thousand. Consider the priority, one general obligation debts, which were things we probably actually did, is six million, two hundred and one thousand. Comes to like thirty-one million dollars. So we do associate costs to these things. It's not, we make a list and don't say how much it's going to cost. And we've done this ever since I've been on the council. And so we do know how much and, and for sure, Colleen is right in that this is probably just the surface of what we need to spend to keep things standing and not leaking and things like that.
Yes, and you are going to have, let the unexpected occur and you need to make sure you go to reserve available for that because with old infrastructure challenges, I don't know about your risk and your insurance coverage and things like that, when things like that happen. But it's, it's, the unexpected will occur and you need to be prepared to deal with that too because some of it is you're not going to be able to say, let's just let this building fall down. You can't do that at, you know, the major intersections.
Could you please explain again about voting?
Yes, one more time. You get a card, you get, you get six total dots, okay, off of this card. So you can get these back and I can use them next time if we need to. So three, you put three dots on this sheet, three dots on this sheet. You can't put all three dots or two dots on one item, you have to spread your dots around. And the honor system is that you only use six dots.
So is it one dot for family services or do you want the dots broken up between youth, safety, senior?
That, that actually is a good point.
You could really break them up.
Yeah, we should break them up.
You want to break these up? There's no, okay. How many, how many choices do you want to make out of this in terms of priorities?
To find safety.
And, and then on the facilities, Jean? Then when you, if you put one of your dots over there for facilities, then how do you get three over there? Well, you get, no, you want to get three and that's there.
I'm not here for facilities.
But you don't put any dots there?
Yes, don't put any dots there right now.
Right, I just want to make sure.
So this is just, this is not the area. Let's give it a try, let's see what happens and then give you a chance to stretch your legs, so.
Could you define safety issues just a little bit?
I wish I could. I wish I could. I do not know what safety issues.
The council has previously defined that as sort of an ongoing list of police, community services, but also traffic safety. The, 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 the council has previously defined that as sort of an ongoing list of police, community services, but also traffic safety.
Okay.
Wait, how many?
I know these.
You all get a sheet.
No, you get the whole sheet.
Or you get a sheet.
And then you pass, pass your unused ones back.
Yes.
Okay.
I want to get these ones back. Honor system, stretch, and get refreshments will come along, um, for things in areas that are not your highest priorities. And when they do, one thing that you can do is weigh those other opportunities against your priorities and make decisions as to whether you're going to invest your time in what you originally decided, or if the opportunity is so great that you have to, um, you have to move forward with that new opportunity. So the question about what you do with opportunities as they arise, because they will, and challenges too. Um, how, where they will fit into your system is, is one of your long-term strategies for, for planning. Now, keep in mind that all these goals are goals that you've already adopted, so you're not, you're not taking new action on the goals themselves. But what you are talking about doing is setting priorities among those goals on what things you want your, from a policy standpoint, and delivering them operationally to your manager, who will have then, um, some choices about how to deliver information back to you about what's possible to be done. So, on the programmatic side, uh, the top item was economic development. The next one was at-risk and at-need families, and the third priority, uh, running a close second or close third, is, um, finances. Uh, talking about general obligation debt and pension debt and other forms of, of, uh, the city's financial condition, what does it mean? So. Is this what facilities means to you? I'm, I'm looking for definitions. Does this define facilities for you?
Yeah.
It does, yeah. We don't have our garages on there.
We public, public.
Public, yeah. We have three.
We have big parking garages, and surface lots too, that.
Right, yeah, the other slots, yeah.
We didn't need ours, I mean, the, the whole parking.
Parking facilities, you know, very general.
Yes, my thought was that we would just get an inventory, so if we're forgetting something, we're not.
Right.
Sure. You're not excluding, well, you're not excluding anything.
Right.
But it's, it's good to see them.
This may not be your comprehensive list, and so there might be other things that are just coming to you at this moment after, at the end of a long and busy month. So, um, so definitions then. This represents your, your facilities, and your, and what this means is, these are the facilities that you want to explore further in terms of what it's gonna cost to keep them, maintain them, operate them, um, determine whether they're capable of producing revenue, what their expenditure levels are, um, whether or not you'd want, do you want to talk about public-private partnerships or other opportunities for, um, using the facilities in different ways than you have done in the past?
I would like to.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Maybe else I would like to.
A component of it. So you're not just saying that you wanna be static. You wanna look at, at other things that are possible. You, whether you choose to do them or not will be your decision and your community's decision on how things are used and what, what people are doing. But they're changing too. Mark described what, what's going on in the sixth ward, um, that demographically, it's, it's becoming different, and it will happen in all of your wards, and it will happen throughout the city of Evanston. It's a, you know, it's a demographic cycle, and so there will be different needs at different times, and what people are doing now, um, with their time is different. Just, you know, look at smartphones. Uh, I, I spent, uh, a week in Taipei a year ago, April, in the Republic of China, and they call the entire generation that uses technology, the heads-down peoples. Yeah, and it leads to all sorts of things, from, you know, pedestrian vehicle accidents to, um, them, medical contraindications, but things change, and so you didn't do that ten years ago. And, um, who knows what we'll be doing ten years from now when it comes to technology, so, yes?
Yeah, so, everyone said yes to public-private partnerships. I would, well, says, are public-private partnerships possible? I think it'd be really helpful to do a definition considering they've never been done here, and everyone, we've tried to maybe talk, I, I'd like to know what anyone's thought on what a public-private partnership really is for you, and if you could really stomach doing one, and what does that mean?
I'm, I'm thinking, Colleen, maybe we want to, uh, have another discussion about, a separate discussion about public-private partnerships and actually bring in some other information, um, that might help us. See how they would fit in Evanston and help us accomplish what.
Okay, I, I just, because everyone said yes.
I had a question about facilities too. Where do we include some of our park buildings? We got the Park Street Beach building, we have Mason Park building, we got, um, we have other park buildings that are part of our facilities, buildings that we maintain, that we built.
We'll come back with a complete list.
Okay, yeah, all right.
And as part of the process, can we also review, um, looking at all of our facilities to see if they're all really needed?
So.
Now we do that.
Do you know what the current condition is of the buildings? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, and, and, and how feasible it is, is it to really do something with them?
That's going to be a long discussion.
Yeah, I, oh, I, I understand, but I think it's a discussion that we're gonna have to have. We're really gonna be honest about it.
Yeah, that's interesting. What, and I, I think the other thing that when we look at facilities is, that I think of is, what's the timeline we're looking at here? I mean, are we talking about the next five years, or, and I think all of these, whatever facilities we decide are important to us, we should have a five-year timeline, a ten-year timeline, a twenty-year timeline. Because as you said, things are changing so rapidly that, um, you know, you think about, uh, I think, well, one thing, drive-through banks. You know, are you really gonna need a drive-through bank fifteen years from now, even five years from now? Right, you know, so that's just one thing that comes to mind, but I do think all of these facilities, we should have a timeline on, so we're saying, you know, how many community centers do we need ten years from now? What's our demographic going to be like? Uh, what, uh?
How many parks do we need?
Station.
How many fire stations do we need?
How big will our municipal government be ten years from now? You know, so how much, you know, what are, what are we looking at in terms of, uh, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, law firms are, are downsizing in terms of staff that they need. It's all because of technology. I'm, I'm bringing in other examples of what I think about, but it's, uh, so I think we have to look forward on all of these facilities and then, and do the cost-benefit analysis. Or is there a repurposing, or, you know, that you use it for, that there's something that our community wants, but maybe we are no longer using a building in a one particular way, but you alter it in another way.
Yeah, just think about, uh, what would happen if, if there were a, an electrical outlet like every twenty feet, which is what they just about are trying to do in airports these days. Um, you know, you didn't need that many electric outlets when people didn't have stuff that needed to be, yes, needed to be powered. And so it's, it, and especially your older facilities, these facilities have been around, these facilities have been around a long time. They don't have that kind of infrastructure built in, and adding that in is expensive, it's expensive stuff, is what's Wally's thought for health systems. When you open the walls, who knows what you're gonna find. Uh, it could be exciting or not.
Well, maybe universal Wi-Fi is one of those facilities, those new facilities that we're not thinking of that we build for as a public amenity.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, Jane.
Our residents. That's not attached to a building.
That's a very good list. Congratulations. And I'm sure, I'm sure there are things on there that will be coming on there as well. So, and you might wanna think about, Wally asked the question about, uh, future facilities, and, um, when you look into, you know, your own futures and future, um, activities in the ward, and the future of Evanston as a whole, and where it fits into the region, um, what could happen here? So, this is, this is a good topic. Um, you may not have answers right now, and, um, but it's, it's going to be an important thing to, uh, an important component of this discussion of facilities, is what happens next. Okay, um, so are you comfortable that, that, um, facility is defined? Is there anything else that you would like to have added to the comments on that? You have seen the list, and it may not be comprehensive at this point, you know, public-private partnerships, what are your choices? Then it means a lot of different things, and until you get a list to see what, what we could encompass, um, you, you probably don't have much of a basis to discuss this item. Current conditions of facilities, that's important to know. What sort of timeline do you want to, to use when you talk about facilities and, and current future uses? What's happening with your demographics? Uh, can you reposition any of the, uh, facilities? And you might wanna talk more about what that means too. And then the cost-benefit analysis, um, you know, what's the cost to the community, what's the benefit to the community? It's not always financial. Sometimes it is, but it's not always financial. There's historic preservation, values analysis, the uses, the, um, whether or not it's serving the entire community or just a segment of the community. So, those, these are important questions and good things to think about. Okay, that's number one. Good job. Number two is the water utility. So. Define the water utility for.
It's our plant down at the lake. And all the pipes.
And all the pipes.
And the, and the.
The wheeling system, you know, or whatever it's.
And the intake.
Right.
And that, it's everything you use to provide clean, fresh-urized water.
Yes.
So, pipes, buildings, reservoirs.
Beautiful grounds.
Lovely beach.
Treatment plant? You have the treatment for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Treatment facility. Stand pipes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Two.
Zebra mussels.
Invasive species.
Yes.
Invasive species.
Zebras.
Prevention of them is important.
Security.
Security and the zebra mush- muscle issue to prevent.
Right, sure. It's an, it's an at-cost we didn't have twenty years ago.
Right. And we didn't believe the story that they could actually consume the entire planet.
Um, and there is, uh, land surrounding this?
Yes.
Is it used for recreation?
No, not anymore.
Could be though.
This, is this just the facilities that serve Evanston residents, or not?
For now. Well, but we, we, well, no, we pump water to other communities, I mean, yeah.
We sell to other communities.
Do you own the infrastructure in the other communities?
Yeah, well, no, we don't. We, we, we have the treatment infrastructure, and then for the large, for large communities, they own the pipe, and then to Skokie, we wheel it through our system.
And we sell to Lincolnwood.
Lincolnwood, and then, so there's, there are a number of other communities we're talking to. So my understanding of this is that too.
Right, yeah.
Because it's what's not there yet.
Yeah, the capacity.
Right, so it's, it's, it's everything we need to make sure Evanston residents have water as well as the activities that we're doing with other communities.
And this, there, this would also be all of the metering services. The lab.
Cap water trailer.
That.
Can't call it a hydration station. Brenda sent us a letter.
Okay, so, so this is a big asset, and, um, as, as the gentleman from the public, public commented earlier, um, it's, for him, it's a question of whether or not there is, um, revenue coming from.
Right.
I'm sure, and no public comment at this time, but, but the whole issue around the value of this utility, what it's worth to this community, uh, what revenue it generates, what expenditures.
And what revenue it could generate, and what revenue it could generate.
What revenue it could generate, where do you wanna go with it in the future? So this is, this is what you've got now. Is that correct? Okay, and so, the, the question in terms of definition is what are the possibilities for the future? You can continue along the lines that you are now, serving the community, serving Evanston and the communities that you currently have contracts with. So, but it sounds like an opportunity has arisen where an expansion might be worth exploring.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so, and it sounds like that's why this is number two on the list, um, in, in part, because the expansion is worth exploring because there's a possibility of additional revenue coming to the city.
Right.
That's what I hear.
Yes.
Okay, and, and, um, you're pretty comfortable with that, the, um, what you think is occurring is, is a good possibility that additional revenue could be coming to the city. Do you have any, do you have any thoughts about, um, how much of that revenue needs to go back into the utility and how much can actually come to the city? And for, for expenses other than water-related?
That's Markish.
Yes, we have thoughts on it. No, we've not published all of those thoughts, but it is, the, the idea is for it to be a resource and not a, um, you know, not a break-even. That, uh, e- even with the capital investment, there will be a resource, and then once the capital investment is paid off, um, a resource for replacement or a resource for other purposes.
So at least preliminarily. It could be revenue to the city.
Well, revenue to the city general fund versus revenue to support.
The water.
A city water expenses, and I think that's Mark's point, is that we've not had that discussion with the councils to where the lines are, but we will.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a big issue, and then policy-wise, um, one of the policies that can arise from this discussion is, um, assuming that there is excess revenue that could come to the city's general fund, how do you want to spend that? And so, because if your city is like most cities, and based on the discussions I've had with you individually, the idea is that it's very hard to raise revenue by, um, increasing taxes. And it's very hard to cut expenses any further than you may have cut. Now, that may be true, or it may not, and, um, so generating a new source of revenue to the city that you don't have to either cut expenses or. that you don't have to either cut expenses or raise new taxes is a really powerful concept. So, policy-wise, you have, you also have choices. Do you want to deal with what you've got now? And you have the city of Evanston now with its programs, its facilities. Do you want to keep and maintain those? Or do you want to look at new stuff here? And I, I think for some of you I mentioned, I had dealt with the city in California that found thirteen million dollars in new revenue and it took the council forty-eight hours to come up with sixty-four million dollars worth of new projects. And so, it's, you know, it's really heady stuff to have a little bit of extra revenue to the city services. So, policy-wise, one of the things that, in, in addition to looking at all the money side of things, you know, what do you want to do with the revenue that you get? Do you want to maintain what you've got? Do you want to do new stuff? And that is your decision and your discussion that you need to have with the community about that.
So, Anne. The whole first part of this meeting was our inability to maintain what we have. So, that is going to be a first priority. And adding, adding a new source of revenue like water is no different really than adding to the tax base, which while raising taxes is not a healthy way to generate more revenue for our taxpayers, adding to that tax base is exactly the right way to go about raising the revenues.
So, that will be a significant portion of, of future discussion on this. Once you sort out whether or not it makes sense to go forward, what are you going to do with it? So, are there any other elements for the water utility that you wanted to find? Is that great when your facilitator asks you a question and turns her back on you?
We, we have to be conscious of the greater picture of Illinois and the entire Great Lakes in the fact that the lake is shrinking in a, in a pretty serious way. And we need to stop. If we're going to start taking more water from it, I think we need to be conscious of the fact we've got to get the water back in there too. And we have a lot of organizations that deal with this, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District and, you know, other state agencies. But the watershed that is in our domain could be capitalized on. And, but also working with other communities and like I said statewide and other national, you know, Great Lakes states to make this happen and make it safe, clean water that we can turn around.
So, I, I think to some extent, Mark, that goes to what Ron mentioned earlier about folding sustainability into a lot of what we do. And so, a lot of restoring the watershed and moving runoff out of our sewers, but rather back into the watershed is, can be addressed through some green infrastructure, streets, some of the capital issues.
Yeah.
Also, our David Stoneback and I agreed years ago that we could drop membership in the Great Lakes Association and we've agreed we have to rejoin the Great Lakes Association.
What, the, the state association? No, but it's a great.
The state.
Deborah Sherman, she was meeting with us, said that it's basically anything east, I think it may be a bridge or Sherman Avenue goes into the lake. Runoff goes into the lake, but everything west of there goes into Lake, uh, goes into the Mississippi River. So, it's not, it's not quite as easy as, as the.
So, storm drain runoff doesn't get treated before it goes into the lake?
Well, it doesn't.
You could.
It goes in two different places.
But to be, to be taking water out of the lake and providing for other communities, we're going to have to show ourselves as a responsible community that can, can, you know, keep replenishing the lake and advocate for planes.
That's the point.
But that's it. We have to, we have to take a leap in this.
Well, it's a tiny little slice of everything east of Chicago Avenue or Sherman Avenue that goes back into the lake, not, not everything else.
Okay, the third item on the list is streets. Streets, sidewalks and alleys.
So, are we considering our surface lots part of streets, sidewalks, alleys? Or are they a facility in the same way that the parking decks are?
They're, they're funded, yeah. You've got to keep them.
I mean, we keep. Well, they're separate for funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, but they're separate for funding.
Yeah.
Yes, so definition, do you want to include parking lots?
No, no.
No.
That's what it is.
I mean, this is, this is really right of way. No.
What, what does this mean to you? Does this mean, this is your, your third priority? So, this is, you, you have a pavement management system in place and you use it to identify the streets that need to be improved first, second and third. So, do you want to change that? Do you want to put more emphasis on it? Do you want to, when we get to talking about money, which we're running out of time doing, do you want to put more money toward it?
I think we need to get on a regular schedule. I think we're still putting catch-up on a lot of the streets that haven't been done, certainly on sidewalks that may not have been done, and alleys that are in deplorable shape. So, I, I think, you know, looking towards establishing a twenty-year goal, some of the streets that we've taken over from state control, for example, that we're going to have to plan on paving again. But having, having a reasonable replacement schedule so that we know what to anticipate and what the associated costs are going to be is important.
Maybe, maybe having the same kind of, of process for the sidewalks and alleys that we have for the streets.
Yeah, I, I think that.
That kind of.
Yeah, right. We need to get the, the rest of our alleys paved. And I know that's been a concern of the council for a long time. Some of the streets, because of some of the intensive construction that's going on around the Northwestern campus and large, huge trucks using those streets, they're not going to last as long as others. Suzette is on top of all that. No, I think staff is doing a really good job.
Yeah, I know, but I was just saying we have the same kind of process for the sidewalks and alleys that we have with the streets. Even though we may be a little bit behind in the streets, at least we do have a process. On the alleys, we have special assessments, so we can't have the same kind of process.
Well, and the sidewalks too, fifty-fifty.
Yeah, because people have to decide what they want to.
I think maybe the suggestion is, is that we do an analysis of the alleys and figure out, even though we do a special assessment, maybe we want, we want to revisit that policy. We're making street sidewalks and alleys a priority. Maybe there's a way to discuss how we fund paving of alleys. That's different than the way we're doing it now.
Just an idea. And I would like to encourage the members of the Community Development Block Grant Committee to remember when it comes to the funding night that the first thing we don't start chopping on is sidewalk, streets and alleys.
That's right.
Because we.
CDVG money can be used on.
And we, we always, we have three funds, two funds, three funds for that. But when we start cutting in order to, you know, pay for other things, that's the first place we look. So, if it's really a priority, let's remember this year we won't do that.
I agree.
And then looking at our, at our strategies for the street sidewalks and alleys, think about long-term, where are the users going to be and how are they going to use it?
Right.
And where will they be going to and coming from? And I think we've gotten to some of that in the multimodal transportation plan. We've identified transit centers and we know parking needs and so forth.
And I think from, Sergeant, but I think also from a sidewalks point, I mean, this, we have to look at that on balance with liability problems that we have.
And we've been remediating crosswalks and all of those things. Maybe this is the pedestrian safety, where that goes in is really as we approach fixing streets and sidewalks, building in some pedestrian safety.
Yeah, from all aspects. Liability and risk to us and to the pedestrian.
Yeah. Yeah, there are streets and, and transportation systems is a key component of the liabilities of city faces.
Yeah, right.
So, does this encompass what you'd like to look at? Is there anything missing off of this list?
Well, we've got some money coming out of the Washington National TIP in how many years? Seven years, six years, seven years?
Oh, until it closes.
Uh-huh.
Seven years.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's two money that's available. Now, on the CDVG money that Anne was mentioning, you know, one of the things that you might want to think about, strategies of dealing with this is if you do know that you have revenue sources that could be used for streets and sidewalks and alleys, if you do want to emphasize these, you can adopt policies as a council and say, this will be our first priority on CDVG funding. And this will be our second and third. And use that as a basis for, you know, you're always going to get requests. There's no doubt about it. But when you adopt a policy and a strategy, then you can say, look, we really appreciate it, but we've got this strategy. We have committed ourselves to our infrastructure with this money and, and we really appreciate your, your interest in doing something else, but this is our, this is our approved plan. So, that might be helpful to you in explaining what you're doing and why. Okay, anything else here? All right, let's toss it. This is, I think, the biggest definition issue that you're going to have this evening is what is economic development? So, who wants to take a stab at that? And one way of, one way of looking at it might be, there's economic development in the board by board. And then there, and, but what happens in the board was its relationship with the city of Evanston as a whole. So, each of you has potential economic development opportunities within the jurisdiction that you represent. But where does it fit in with the overall city goals as well? And does it mean something different in each board? Does it mean something different to the city of Evanston? You may not be able to answer this tonight. Maybe we just raise questions about this tonight. And you think about it and come back and have a, a follow-up discussion on this. But what does this mean?
I think, obviously, you know, some of us are actually trained in economic development and some don't have any idea of what it is. So, I think it is all over the board. I agree with you. But I think the, the bigger issue that comes up.
I just like to, you keep insulting everybody.
I wasn't insulting anyone.
You did, you did. Everybody knows.
You just did.
Well, I did not mean.
You said some of us, some of you don't, don't know anything about.
No, no, you, you've said before you don't, you're not interested in it.
No, I have never said I'm not interested in it.
So, sorry.
You're making stuff up all night long.
I didn't make anything up, but anyway, the point is.
You gotta, you gotta dial it down, okay?
Well, now you're insulting.
Now, I am, I, I am frustrated, I'm, I'm just kind of.
I am so sorry that you, that you feel like I was attacking you in any way, Alderman Wilson. I feel very bad about that.
I think it's the whole group.
I, I'm not happy with the economic development, lack of economic development foresight of the group. Yes, that is very true. There's no question about that. I'm very disappointed in the lack of economic development that this council has not gone forward with. I agree with that. But I think the bigger issue with economic development is understanding whether or not you fund economic development or you don't fund it. Do you make it a place that people want to come to? Or do you actually give them money to come here? So, it's incentive versus actually having a place that is open for economic development. And those, those are very different things. And what do you have the wherewithal to do? Is it really putting public money forward or not? So, even beyond whether you know what economic development is or not, it's how you choose to use the money to do it.
I totally agree with what you just said. I think that's where kind of we have our breakdowns as a group. I think some of us view economic development as creating a positive environment for people to come to or a question of providing the incentives. So, that creates a lot of the, the challenges that we have as a group in coming up with approving projects or coming up with projects. So, I don't think either one of those approaches is wrong. I just think it's two different ways of looking at it. So, I think that's just something that we will have to collectively work on going forward with. And, you know, I think we all want to do, we all want to create the positive environment. Each of us have, I think, different thresholds on the incentives we're willing to go along with. And, you know, but I think if we, you know, have a general idea of the long-term objectives, what we want to accomplish with it, we can work together and come up with.
I think that's a very good point. Ultimately, what does economic development do for your community?
Anybody have a bottom line? Yeah. So. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, and I know you will, but I think we wouldn't have a lot of trouble coming up with what an economic development goal is, what our vision is, is what tools we deploy to get there. So, we have in our economic development toolbox, everything from TIPS to facade improvement, and we have much different opinions upon about which ones we should use and which are more effective than others. And what role a municipality should play in deploying the tools in the toolbox. But I think that we would pretty easily find some common agreement about what we want to accomplish, that what our, where our goals are. In regard to business and improving the lives of employers and employees in them.
And expanding our tax base. I mean, for me, that's bottom line. And if we could all just get on that, on that page, that, you know, we could figure out how to work out the rest of the differences.
That's it.
Yeah. I think, well, I was going to agree exactly with some of the familiar, some of the earlier comments, but also with, it's not what Alderman Holmes said. For me, a good economic development project is one that increases the tax base as well as increases employment opportunities for, for Evanston residents. And that's an important issue to me as well.
And also increases the tax base.
Yeah, that's what I said that first.
And.
And so, I think the larger question that, where we get into ugly debates and criticism from the community is how much and what percentage.
Can I record for you that you could facilitate? That might be helpful.
That would be, thank you, Alderman.
What were you writing here? How, how it broke out?
Just making a comment of just how much and to what level is we'll get into debate and criticism from our residents.
Anne?
Well, I, I have come to accept some of Colleen's criticisms. And that is her argument that this is, or this, this does, or this does not provide her with any confidence on return on investment. And I think it would be, I, I know it's time-consuming, but maybe we'll have an intern or something someday who could take a look at the risks we've taken and, and show us what the return on our investment has been. I mean, we can do the big picture, the TIP. Like, we know when we closed the downtown TIP where the theaters are, that we had nine million dollars in reserve that we distributed to all the tax inputs. I mean, if that ain't an indication that we took good risk, not to mention all the money that we spent in that TIP. I mean, they're doing infrastructure. And I know we originally bonded twenty-three million dollars there and still had nine million left over. So, I, I think it's really important to look at the practices, at the practice we, we perform. How, how, what have we done? And how has it worked? And, I mean, when you, when you take property that's never been on the tax roll, you put it on the tax roll. And, I mean, when you take property that's never been on the tax roll, you put it on the tax roll, and maybe you give back sales tax where there have never been sales tax before. I mean, it just, if it were but for that incentive, this would not happen. Then I, you know, and I don't know how you develop a policy for that when it hasn't happened yet. But I do think you can look at our past practice. And I think in this community, we've not made a lot of mistakes. Now, we've given money away to people, but I think we've gotten away from that. And what we're doing now is either rebating what they've already paid, or we're loaning them. And all of that money, you know, if we, if the risk we've taken is pretty secure, then there's going to be a return on that investment. And so, you know, when people say we're giving money away to businesses, I really take, make an objection to that.
Well, economic development has intrinsic value as well.
Absolutely.
It's not just the money. It's what value does it bring to your community, does it add to the quality of life?
Well, I agree with that, but I'm willing to go along with the business. We can't give it away anymore. We've got to...
Okay. And that's actually a very good, a very good concept, is to go back and take a look at a couple of projects and say, "How did it work the way that we expected it to?"
Maybe even a couple that were very controversial, you know, as well as ones that everybody embraced.
Yeah, yes.
Well, I think Judy had... Well, we had and developed on the Economic Development Committee, the twenty thirteen work plan, and that was pretty specific. And I was very happy with that and was not very happy with previous work plans. And so, I guess I would just suggest that we all include that, refer to that as part of that. But, you know, the impressive part of that was, I think, that staff is now mature enough to understand the, that sort of undefinable quality of place that Evanston has. I mean, we know what we have transportation. We know what we have the university. We have a beautiful downtown. We have beautiful residential areas. We've managed to keep those all balanced pretty well together. But we're clearly not, we're not going in the right direction with, for example, in the downtown, so many restaurants. How do we attract more retail? How do we attract more office? How do we keep that balance going that will see us over maybe a twenty-year period? But I do think the work plan tried to, tried to address that. Tried to take a look at what it is, where we're going, and how we want to get there, given the pressures from the economy. I mean, there aren't many people wanting to start up, you know, retail stores in two thousand square feet in our downtown.
But not only downtown, but the other neighborhoods.
No, I have a neighborhood up at Nois Street. I mean, I...
You got it all, Judy, but don't forget the neighborhood.
No, no, I'm not, but I'm speaking to what I know. And so, in my ward, Nois Street and downtown, but...
We share noise.
We do share noise. But I do think that work plan is really important for us to keep people...
Well, I think that, I agree with Anne. I really want to see what our record's been. I mean, let's look at it. And I think we should, but I think that it's not an either-or. I think that part of, you know, for the longest time, Evanston had the reputation that we were very difficult to start a business in, we were difficult to do business in, we were certainly difficult to develop in. I mean, that was the reputation that we had. And frankly, some of it was true. I mean, the hoops that, the red tape that you ran into here at the Civic Center was pretty awful. And so, some of that's been addressed. But the other aspect is, I mean, you can create a great environment to do business in, but you also can, I mean, from my point of view is, you can also stimulate business by judiciously using city funds. And that's something that we did in our TIP districts, but, and in very small projects for our facade development. But between the facade redevelopment project and then the TIP project, there wasn't anything really in between that I can think of. So, I think now, in the last four or five years, we are now strategically spending city dollars. And I think there is a difference on the council in terms of how we do that. But from my standpoint, what we get more is the more, it isn't just that we're a reactive force or reactive to what arrives from the private market to us, but that we get to put our hands on the steering wheel because we know what we'd like to have in our community. And that by using stimulus dollars, we don't, just don't repel things if we can, but we actually steer things to come to us. And that's an enormous difference in how things operate.
Do you think you can build policies around your choices there? You're right. It doesn't have to be one way or another way. But you can, your economic development policy can include both of those and then maybe prioritize within your policy which ones you want to seek for second and third, if you had the choice. The other...
I agree. I think we could if we had the data that Anne is asking for, which I think would help us understand where we've been particularly successful and what did we do there. You know, another aspect of this economic development that we have done in the past where we did do it, which not all of us agreed on, is we gave zoning allowances. And so, that was an enormous amount of economic development that we gave. That was the only thing that we did, you know, and much to a lot of the community's consternation.
So, is that density, or you're talking?
Density, height, you know, changes in use, things like that.
Is that everywhere?
Not everywhere.
One other thing that can help clarify economic development for you is what do you, what does it not mean to you?
What does it like?
What does it not mean to you? And some communities don't want absolutely no building above a certain height or not any more than twenty units per acre, or that they're not going to spend more than X number of dollars on incentives or et cetera. Are there certain kinds of businesses you absolutely do not want to have in Evanston? And can you, can you come to agreement on those?
Life culture.
Yeah, hazardous treatment, I should... There are any number of things. So, knowing what you don't want can also be as valuable as knowing what you want. And so, you might want to think about that too, but what is, what is, what is promoting in...
I don't want things that are property tax exempt. I don't want resorts that are property exempt. I don't want those. That adds nothing. You know, maybe intrinsic to somebody or to some group, but in general, citywide, it's only an expense to the city.
Because one of the goals of economic development, what it sounds like from your conversation, is to try and minimize the overall tax impact on the residents.
Yeah, that's the whole point.
And so, that can also be an element of economic development. Can you, can you keep taxes stable or reduce them when possible? Or if you do have to increase them, the amounts are incremental instead of large. You at least have the opportunity to mess with your property tax, because in California, we don't get to do that. So, we can't use that as a revenue raising source.
Yeah, but you're also creating quality of place. And that's, and that's how attractive are you making the community to people who are coming to live here? And...
So, what don't you like about, what don't you want in economic development? And basically, what is your goal for economic development? What do you want out of it for the City of Evanston as a whole?
Well, I want mainly in my part of town. I want, I, well, because it affects the whole, I mean, when people... I had a, I had a property owner on Howard Street the other day, owned the property for twenty-five years, tell me that she is afraid to drive down Howard Street. This was five days ago, she told me that. And she's owned property that she has not visited in ten or fifteen years. She's not visited the property. And she told me she... So, I think that anything that happens on Howard Street because of the reputational issues is good for the whole city. So, I see this as a city-wide issue. But the intrinsic value to development on Howard Street, economic development on Howard Street, is I don't even think you can, you can account for it. It's so huge. Because every time anything happens down there, for example, in Judy's ward, she can get ten new restaurants and bars a week, and you know, oh, well, you know, it just happens down there. But you get one little, you know, one little flower pot that gets put out on Howard Street, and people go, "Oh, my goodness, look at that." So, every little thing counts. Yeah, but it's, I believe it. So, I think the intrinsic value is just incredibly important as well as providing incentives. Not, I'm not concerned about keeping things out because I think the more buzz that's created, the more good things you have to deal with, and so, I want to keep up with each other.
And you do have, you do have, you do have some remarkable transportation connections in Evanston that I think also can help you with that development. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna leave this. We got another couple of topics on your list. And then we're gonna talk about money and how to get it. All right. At-risk and at-needs families, what does that mean to you? Okay, everybody, take a deep breath, breathe deeply. I know it's getting late, so...
I think one of the most important things about that is keeping families from slipping into a position where they really will have a trouble digging themselves out of. I mean, the homelessness issue is a big one. It's not exactly, you know, somebody slipping on the street. But if you don't have a home, it's hard to get anywhere or even have other services that might help you get back on your feet. Once you're homeless and mobile, I mean, it's really, it just adds to the complexity of trying to pick yourself back up. And I think the whole point behind family services is really, is really keeping that from happening. If it does happen, it helps them as well. We have a lot of organizations that do that. But I think we can play a role, as we are with affordable housing and other things, the Federated Qualified Health Center. All those things are going to help those families at-risk and keep them, you know, in a, in a way that they can actually make a difference and get back on their feet.
So, do you feel like, do you feel like the city is responsible for providing somewhat of a safety net? Yes.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
And it's something you do currently?
Yes.
Certainly.
All right, I think Colleen and Dolores?
Oh, sorry. I think on the, I think you and I maybe have spoken about this, vast at-risk community families, is that we're not doing a good enough job of leveraging the various not-for-profits in conjunction with the township, in conjunction with what we do at the city. There are far too many duplicative services and no coordination of those services. And so, we're really serious about tackling these issues. They, they're so siloed and done in piecemeal fashion that there's no way that the city can really, they, and the city shouldn't be, in my opinion, the one carrying all the weight on this. We spend a lot of money fundraising at not-for-profits. We give money to not-for-profits. Then we have our own programming, and it doesn't make sense to have it all, all these different silos. Additionally, we're a city bounded by other cities that we could partner with and we, in this regard, and I'm not sure that we do enough of that to do the best job to deliver the service as well.
I would agree with you, except that some of that is beyond our control. I think that those, those not-for-profits that we fund, that we can certainly encourage them to do more partnering and that kind of thing, get more bang for the buck. But I do think that we as a city have an obligation to take care of our most needed families, to make sure that housing needs, health needs, those kinds of, and I think we are doing that. Not enough, and I don't know if we can ever do enough, but I think that we do have a responsibility to do that. And, you know, I think that our youth, I mean, we've just made leaps and bounds in these last couple of years. We have an old, new youth and young adult vision to try and address some of that at the city. We have our senior services, you know, at the city, that the city is taking the lead role and things like that.
So, how do you, how do you figure out what you could do originally? And how do you know what the nonprofits are doing, the ones that you fund and the ones that are, that you don't fund?
I think we have a lot of work to do on that. I think that the accountability and evaluation of, you know, assessment of those has to be something that needs to become a priority in terms of where, if we're giving them money, then there's got to be more accountability.
You could, you could use Anne's suggestion about looking at a couple of projects from the economic development standpoint. You could also, and this is, this is a very healthy thing for cities to do, is to stop and pause every once in a while and evaluate whether or not you're being effective in certain areas and what you've got. And health and human services, family issues, those are, they're kind of squishy because you don't have direct responsibility for them. Sometimes you give money. Sometimes you do have direct responsibility. Sometimes somebody else does it. Sometimes you're doing it in conjunction with state or county or township or other communities. So, how do you get your arms around it? So, you know how much you're spending and whether or not your outcomes are what you're wishing. So, it might be a good idea to pick a couple of, a couple of areas over the next year to four years and see if you can do an evaluation and try and figure out who's being served and how much are you spending per service and how much, what's your share and what should, is that the right share? Is that something that's worth talking about?
Yes, very much.
I think there's a better way of funding and supporting human services, social services in Evanston. It is kind of messy, and we do it through middlemen, which is the mental health board. The mental health board and the township really only fund a small portion, small number of our human service agencies in Evanston. So, we don't have a big picture about what everybody's doing and all the services offered. I think there is some duplication, but not nearly as much as twenty years ago as used to be. I don't know the level of collaboration, but I'm thinking there is a degree of coordination among the agencies. But it's hard to know that because the city at its very best is a funder, but we get it secondhand about outcomes, and we are not even a convenor. We're not part of the network of human service agencies in Evanston. I think somebody else is doing that, but I don't know who.
One of the challenges here is how much staffing do you want to devote? And that's probably going to be a future discussion, but, you know, determining accountability is time-consuming. And do you want to do it? Do you want to do it in conjunction with others, et cetera? So, it's another area for collaboration. Something to think about is the cost of determining this. There's an expense to the city paying attention to this stuff. I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it. It's not the right thing to do, but just recognize there's a cost. Anne?
Well, we do a tremendous amount of funding, and sometimes we duplicate. And don't forget, CD funds a whole list of organizations. But we had an interesting experience this past year, and that is our staff came to us and said, "We have nobody who does crisis management. We have people with a hundred cats. We have orders. We have this. We have that." They're not necessarily seniors. They're not yet necessarily youth. But they have these horrible problems that result in 911 calls where, you know, there's no emergency of that kind. So, we went to the social service agencies. We fund shelters. We fund battered women. We fund youth services. We fund legal assistance. We fund everything you can imagine. And metropolitan family service. Nobody could help. Nobody could help. So, who stepped up to the plate? St. Francis Hospital, President's Healthcare, they have a twenty-four-hour crisis line. They came forward, and instead of hiring the employee that our staff said that we should do to deal with this, we pay them a fee for service, right? And they're doing the job. But, I mean, it was incredible that we didn't have somebody... But, I mean, it was incredible that we didn't have somebody who would be willing to take on that job.
It's, it's, it's a challenge, but then there are new services that arise and it seems like none of the old ones go away.
Right. Well, maybe it's something that these agencies should think about because it's obviously a need. If we were gonna hire an employee to handle it.
Right.
Listen, Jane?
Now I've gotten distracted. But I do think, I, I think it's worth analyzing what, taking some time, at least once every, every period of time to figure out what is, you know, what's the effectiveness of this and how much money are we putting in? And then, and then over the long run, you know, when, when an at-risk family becomes, goes into a crisis situation, the amount of city resources or other resources that are expended on that at-risk family when homelessness occurs or foreclosure occurs or eviction, we, we have to balance that against making the investment in the front end. I mean, I, you know, calling it a cost benefit analysis makes it sound so cold, but that's really what we're doing. I mean, you know, the more we put into youth services, the, the more that we are, there's, we're saving in the long run for the entire community, you know, for everyone. So I think that's the whole picture. I mean, to me, that's the whole picture of analyzing how much money are we putting in, how many people are being served, and then what's the outcome over the long haul? And that, that's worth, I mean, data is worth knowing because then you figure out, okay, is, is this really where our dollar is best spent? And as you've said, Ann, then, and who else could do it? You know, or who else is doing it? The other point I was about to say is that among all these agencies, we don't have a central place to get the information for someone who needs to put a family in touch with various things. One of my best friends is a pediatrician, deals with low-income clients at Evanston Hospital. She's, half the time she's a social worker. She doesn't know where to go when she's got a kid who needs this and another kid in the family who needs that. We don't have a central database where someone can work together, can work together, can say, I need this, this, and this, we need to develop that. And nothing else, I mean, to make these things work better. So when someone needs to get that information, they, they can lay their hands on it. The city doesn't have to provide it, but the city maybe has to be the hub of information.
So it's not the same as, no.
Well, in other parts of the country, there's something called 211. And 211 is exactly what you're, what you're describing.
So a doctor calls up and says, I have, I have a family that needs mental health services. I have, you know, a teen that needs mental health services. I have a mother who's being, you know, the, the obvious things they know about, but some other stuff, some more subtle stuff.
Nearly every community in California has a 211 service, started through United Way. And it's through counties in Illinois, like the last state of the larger states around the country that has not started 211.
Surprise, surprise.
Can you put that down, Lori?
Yeah, 211 services, it's like a high-end referral services.
It's a compromise.
The information, it's the connections, it's the Harvey Saver.
Right. Where there's a name.
It's 311 for social services.
Right.
So I'd also like us to take a look at the areas at which we are in the business of direct services, that is not recreational, youth services, senior services, and victim services. We have a social facilitation team within our police department.
Yeah.
We're in the business of direct services in a couple areas. So non-recreational for youth and seniors and victims. We are, we provide these direct services, right.
We just, we just decided to spend more money.
No, I think Jane is saying, aren't you saying?
We got agencies that provide services for our residents, and we also provide direct services in this category for at-risk, for our residents. And are we doing it well? That is, are we the best people to do this?
Right.
Running out of all space.
Jean?
Yes?
Just one of the things that I remember that we brought up, Margaret, we talked a little bit about diversity and how that fits into these categories. So I just noticed in the whole list that that didn't come up. And we talked about, just with Evanston's diversity, you know, race, age, income, and housing, that that played into the whole, where are we?
But I think it is.
At-risk. And just making sure, that's, that's why we do it. That's why we invest in those families, not because of some crazy cost analysis, but because we care about those people in our community. We want to make sure that those families, ages, races, all those income categories are maintained.
And we know that diversity comes with costs.
Yes.
But, but then my point was that, as I said, the cold cost analysis, but it's the, how are our funds best used? Are we really getting it solved?
Understanding your demographics, your current demographics, your demographics to come. And, and there is just more and more and more data out there all the time. I, I saw a piece on your news show this morning about how much information the retail stores and the big shopping centers are gathering on.
All of us.
Exactly what you're doing every minute of the day that you are in their shopping centers. So it's knowing, knowing your services and knowing how those interconnections occur, the, the relationships between different ethnic and nationality groups, age groups, economic, socioeconomic strata, how all that fits together in your community and who needs your help. And some, they'll go in and out. Some will be chronic, have a chronic need, some will go in and out. And so knowing all of that, I think would be helpful in the long run. I don't quite know how you get all that at this point in time, but it's, it's something that you can pay attention to. So, okay, I'm gonna ask you, we are, we are at 9:30, which is where we had hoped to, to stop this evening. Are you willing to at least go to the definition of the last item, which is the financial services?
Or is probably the easiest one for staff to try to take a crack at based on your previous discussions? So we could come back the next time you talk about this with some, oh, because they're questions, really.
The question is, do you want to develop some policies going forward around how you handle your financial condition? What you do about your debt? Whether you decide existing services and, and activities are the things that you want to focus on? Do you want to focus on new activities? What your, what your choices are when it comes to policy issues related to the city's financial condition? Colleen and Margaret?
I think actually the bigger discussion may be, I feel like sometimes I, I don't think everybody's just worried about the finances and the pension debt and the, the bond debt. So I'm not sure that there is a consensus that we have a financial issue. I think that, that might be the, the baseline is, you know, because it doesn't seem to be a, an urgent thing on the majority of people's minds is the, you know, downgrading of the bond, or, or, I mean, our rating, that we continually spend more than we bring in. So that doesn't, like I said, I think that's base, a baseline of, do people even care? And it doesn't seem like most people worry about it.
Are you talking about, are you talking about the council? You're talking about the community?
Oh, 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 no.
Because I, it's, I mean, I think.
Oh, bear in mind, I just, I would, yeah.
That is fair.
Colleen, I do not agree with you. I spend a lot of time on the pension crisis.
I didn't say, I didn't say you. But I think, but overall, we spend more than we bring in and we continue to do debt, is my point. And that's not what we really focus on when we look at what we're doing. Do we say financially, can we afford it? And is that really the major concern on when we make decisions? And I don't think people worry about it.
That's why we're prioritizing.
I think we do worry, we just don't know how to resolve it.
Mayor, did you, was there more that you wanted to say about that?
No, I just wanted to say that everyone has been very supportive of the work I've done on pensions and I appreciate that. And I think this council is very concerned about the pension crisis. And I think everyone on this council understands it.
I think, I think, Colleen, it kind of overrides everything that we do and decisions that we make. We just don't talk about it at every opportunity as you do. So we're thinking about it. I want to give everybody credit for having this on their minds all the time, that it weighs us down. And we're all feeling it because we just don't express it at every opportunity. But I, I, I gotta assume that that's our baseline, is, is concern for our bottom line.
Because we don't have a solution, so maybe that's why the conversation doesn't occur.
Exactly. And, and I think, and so, you know.
We govern several things and, and we're not looking for, I think it just, like you said, it permeates everything that we do and think about without having to express it.
It's a very hard conversation to have because it, it's so big. And one of the things that you can do with the financial policy discussion, and it needs to be a, a future discussion for, for the council, is what are the component pieces? What can we control? What can we not control? What, is there anything more that we can do with what we've got now in terms of reducing expenses or raising revenues? Are there? And, and you had a very good discussion earlier on about if, if you are going to look at your assets, is it worth looking at whether or not public-private partnerships are an opportunity? Or are there things that you aren't using anymore that, that you could, you could potentially lose the, the expense of managing it? So, yeah, and I, and I know you haven't, and, and all cities have. I mean, this has been a horrible period, this last five years, trying to figure out how to keep your basic levels of service going without losing your quality of life and community. And, but you gotta start somewhere. And, you know, this stuff is, the pension and the pension debt, general obligation debt, all of that stuff, it's, it's multi-year, multi-decade. The pension debt issue did not arise overnight. It's not gonna go away overnight. And it's gonna require assistance from other entities to get you in a certain direction. And so, but you have to start somewhere. And that means starting to talk now about how you're gonna set cash aside in the future to, to either pay down your debt or pay your, pay future obligations for these things that you're looking at, that list of facilities. How are you gonna do that? And it's, it is a big issue. So we're trying to break it into smaller pieces here tonight and so that you can have these discussions and start to pick the pieces that you, you want to work on. Marty?
Just to reiterate what the city manager pointed out, staff can come back with some of the things that are already in place. This council, many, many years ago, came up with a fund balance policy, came up with a debt policy. And what we need to do is revisit them and come into what you're doing tonight, and that is a, a long-term finance policy. So we'll, we can put together the ones that are already in place and then, looking forward, we're going to be forced to have a pension funding policy starting in the year 2014, starting to work on it with both pension boards. So that's gonna be a requirement, that every pension in, in city have a funding policy. And then they'll be judged that they, that they abide by those policies to prevent what's happened in the past. So I think, go back to what the city manager pointed out, is we can put together some of the framework and then take shots at it, that the council could then take some, some shots at that, say, we want to add here, add there.
Does that make sense to you? I mean, you, you do have policies in place that you need to pull out and take a look at and say, is this, is this what we want to do now and in the future? Is that okay? Yes, Ann?
Here's what scares me. This year, when I, when I looked at the final budget, the, it scared me to think that as we move to increase the amount we contribute to the pension, it will be the entire, the entire general fund, it will equal the entire general fund. And I, that is just terrifying to me because if that happens and we don't raise taxes, then we're gonna have to raise everything else. Every permit, every, everything. And people are, you know, you want to talk about poor families and, and people with issues in this town? Forget about it. They'll all have to lose it. They'll all have to, because you will not be able to live here. If, if the pension indebtedness continues to consume the entire levy, then we're all in trouble. It's, it's very scary. And I don't think we ever think about that. But this year, when I looked at the proportions, it, it was just unbelievable.
Yeah, you have to talk about it. And, and you have to, I think Marty and your city manager are, are going to be able to provide you with some background on what you've done already and to give you some parameters for some of the choices that you're going to have to make. And these are choices and they're painful and they're difficult. And, but, and they do need to be chucked up. And then this conversation, you know, this is a public conversation. There, it's on tape and hopefully members of the public will take a look at it. And continuing discussions with your community about these issues because it's, it's very easy to just not look at your, your underpinnings on occasion. You just, you know, you just keep going forward. You keep trying to keep your public safety going, keep your infrastructure going, provide your services like you've always done. But you've got this underpinning that's, that's got some challenges to it. And it, and if you don't start talking about it, then you're just kicking the can down the road. And your legislature has done a fine job of that. And, but that doesn't mean you have to. I, I really do believe that cities lead the forefront when it comes to governance because they're the ones that have to deal with the issues on the ground. You see your constituents in the grocery store, at your church, at, when you shop, when you walk down the street or you do your exercise, your constituents are in your face every day. And so you see the impact and you see also the impact of inaction. And you have the opportunity to find ways to start to talk about this and, and meaningful ways for your community. So when they come to you with some special thing that has no money attached to it, then you, you have to have a conversation with them about where that fits into the priorities. Okay, it's now 20 minutes to 10. And in, in a sense, with this last item here, when we were talking about financial policy, you started to talk about the, the resources issue. And you're gonna have to talk more about that, but not tonight. You've had a long month and this is the last Monday of the month and you're not gonna solve this problem tonight and even, you know, tackle it in, in a meaningful way. But there, it, it's not just the money, though. It's time and your staffing. Once again, you are the policymaker, so you give the direction. Wallace gotta go find the resources to, to try and identify how this city can move forward on the policy direction that you've given. And it's, so it's money, it's staffing, and it's time. And you have less of that now than you had five years ago. So you've asked a yeoman's task of, of your city manager and staff. And I fully believe that they're capable of it, as you were capable of giving good, high-quality policy direction. I recognize the challenges to all of that, so, yes.
Jean, I want you to know that I think from my experience with strategic planners and facilitators, that you have done a fabulous job. And I, I really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we only got, we got the agenda, though. So we've got, we've got, we've got a whole nother round.
We started out ahead.
I have to tell you, you should have seen my first cut of the agenda. You could have been here.
Till three in the morning. So, so maybe we could give Jean a round of applause. So next steps. We're gonna start, believe it or not, with a bunch of discussions. Public outreach in September, the budget will come out on October 15th. I think there's still work that needs to be done and would like to ask the council to continue to have some of these discussions now that we're down to six. I think that might be a little easier to do. What's the community role? I mean, is this something you want to come back together at least one more time and flush out some of this before we, we take it to the, out to the community? Do you, that would be my sense, that at least another evening. Do you, that would be my sense, that at least another evening, perhaps with some of the, the key city staff, to talk about, you know, infrastructure streaks, water, economic development, and sort of continue some of these discussions, because the one thing we didn't really get to tonight was the objective piece.
Right.
And so I would think that before we would kind of take this to the community and say, "Here's the thinking," probably needs to be some objectives behind it. So if we were to schedule something, perhaps, you know, the very first part of September and have another evening like this with Jean, the, are you comfortable with the space? I mean, the idea is...
Yeah, I'd like it.
And, and I think we'll have to see how the TV came out, but, you know, at least that's accessible. We've got members of the press here, members of the public here. I, I think the facility has worked, so I would, would encourage you that we would just do this again. So maybe we have another evening focusing on the six, but geared more toward the objective piece and to talk about the resource piece and see how far we get in another evening, again, perhaps in early September. Does that make sense for everyone?
Yeah, and maybe we start earlier, so we don't have to go so late.
Okay, and, 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 you know, I, thank you for going as late as you did. I think the 6:15, I know all the people in Austin often have difficulty getting here right at six, depending on their days, so perhaps we could start at 6:15.
Maybe this plan is early.
Also, you know, I, I don't know where Saturdays are on people's radar. I think they get hard in the fall, let's do Saturdays, but we could try to do 6:00 or 6:15 for the next time and look for dates right after, right after Labor Day. Does that make sense for everybody?
Yes, that sounds very good.
Okay. Madam Mayor, anything else you want to...
Thank you very much, Jane, and yes, I think we need to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move the journal. Second. With Janet Ford's best one.
No, I could get here at six.